Gina Argento.
Here.
Ogden Bakarowski. Lisa Bamanthi. Gina Barrows.
Here.
Eric Brusadis. Thomas Burrows.
Here.
Iris Cabrera. Phil Capponegro. Frank Carbone.
Yeah.
Steven Chesler.
Yeah.
Michael Chiricella. Teresa Sensiata. Stephanie Cuevas. Stephanie? Ronan Dally. Giovanni Damato.
Here.
Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dibinowski.
Here.
Lloyd Feng.
Here.
Thank you. And for those new board members, if I pronounce your ro- my n- your name wrong, pl- please correct me. Julia Amanda Foster.
Here.
Chairperson Fuller.
Yeah.
Crystal Garcia.
Here.
Thank you. Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross.
I'm here.
Thank you. David Hemlick. Sabrina Hilk.
Here.
Thank you. Katie Denny Horwitz.
Here.
Sonia Iglesias.
Yeah.
Moisha Indig. Robert Jeffrey. Lozana Kaminsky.
Yeah.
Corey Canton. Paul Kelteborn.
Here.
William Clagsvold. Yo Landau. Marie Lianza.
Here.
Yo Low. Trina McKiva. Adam Myers. Sante Machelli. Toby Moskovitz. Martin Needleman. I'm sorry. I, I've- Rabbi Needleman. Karen Nieves. Mario Dahmerk.
I'm here.
Janice Peterson. Bella Sable.
Here.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Isaac Soffer. Del Teague.
Here.
William Vega.
Here.
Maria Viera. Simon Weiser.
Jerry, I'm, I'm here, Eric Brusadis.
Twenty-six, including Mr. Brusadis, which gives us a quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, uh, Jerry. Um, we're gonna do, uh, nominations for the attendance committee, which was an omission from our last meeting on all of our behalf. Uh, present attended committee is Rabbi Needleman, Rabbi, uh, David Needleman is the chair. Eric Brusadis is a member. Iris Cabrera- Cabrera is a member. As you know, our t- attendance committee called for three people on that committee. The floor is now nominate, open for nominations of attendance committee.
Madam Chair, just to preface, nominations do not need second. However, if the member is present, they should be asked if they accept, accept the nomination because we don't have the ten-day grace period.
Okay, thank you. Floor is open for nominations for attendance committee.
And Madam Chair. Uh, Eric Brusadis, I nominate Iris Cabrera as chair.
There's only a position as member. You, you can't, you don't, the chair is appointed by the board chair.
Understood. I nominate Iris Cabrera. Sorry for the mistake.
Eric, I didn't hear who you nominated.
Iris.
Iris Cabrera.
For the chair. We ju- we just nominate for members and, uh, we just are nominating for members.
That's right, yes.
I nominate Rabbi Needleman for the chair.
I nominate Eric Brusadis. Del Teague.
Eric, you accept?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Del.
So you, uh, Eric, you was nominating Iris for a member. You changed it, did you, I mean, what happened with Iris?
Iris is nominated as a, as a potential, as a candidate.
Okay, and that was that.
So, so far, you have three candidates.
Okay.
Iris, do you accept? Joel Gross.
Joe said it again.
Nominating Simon Weiser. I nominating Simon Weiser.
Simon, do you accept? Simon, do you accept? I don't think he's on.
He has to omniute.
He's on, but he's not unmuted? Did you say he was on, uh, Joe?
This is Simon, you, you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I accept it.
Okay. Is, is Iris on? Does she accept her nomination?
I'm also nominating Rabbi Needleman.
He's already nominated, Mr. Gross.
There's three people, no?
Well, is that four? Okay, the nominations, Eric Brus- Brusadis, Iris Cabrero, Rabbi Needleman, and Simon Weiser. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Nominations closed. Voting will be held at eight o'clock.
Um, hi, everyone. This is Iris Cabrera. I just enjoyed the meeting, so I've been no- dom- nominated for what? Sorry.
Attendance committee.
Okay, alright.
You accept?
Well, one second, Chair.
Yes.
I ha- I have a question, Simon.
Yes.
So, so far, the, the, no new na- names came forward, uh, then, then, um, I, 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 if only, it is that, as I understood, only these three names were nominated for attendance committee, Rabbi Needleman, Eric, and Iris?
And you.
The- then I decline. Then let it be the way it was till now.
Okay. Simon declined nomination, so it's Eric, Rabbi Needleman, and, uh, Iris. Nomination's closed. Okay, we'll have the voting at eight o'clock with our regular election, with our elec- with our regular election at eight o'clock. First i- item on the com- on the agenda is a presentation, Kingsland Avenue. Corporation to be formed is Bernard A- Alexis Terrace Torres, Doing Business TD, TD, TBD seven-eight Kingsland Avenue.
Your Honor, I'm your honor, I'm sorry.
Yes, Tom.
Chair Fuller, sorry, but I was still in court. Forgive me.
Okay.
Mr. Palillo is the lawyer for that applicant, and he had sent an email that he was gonna be out of the country, and so was gonna have to postpone this to a later meeting. I, I believe that was received at the office. I don't know, is Frank Palillo out there in the audience? Um, so I believe he's going, he's gonna be away, and this one was gonna be asked to be postponed. Jerry, do you know? I'm looking, where's the list of people who are in the audience?
That's correct, uh, Tom. That item was, uh, that item is postponed, and the other, we are to proceed as stated.
Okay, great, okay.
Okay, next item is two-nine-two Notion and, and grand, ground leases, North Eighth Street.
Yeah, that is an application for a hotel liquor license, and there's now, and, uh, there is now a community review for hotels, but this was before that went into effect, but we asked them to present to the full board about their hotel, what their spaces are gonna be, where their bar, the liquor's gonna be served, what their location is, et cetera, so, um, hopefully they're here.
Hi, w- we are here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, everyone. My name, my name is Donald Bernstein, and I'm the attorney for the applicant, and two representatives, uh, from my client, uh, Andrew Bustle, uh, Adam Bustle and Andrew Kleiman are, Kleiman are also here with me. Uh, this is actually two applications that we are making. One is for a hotel, the other is for a restaurant, uh, on the top floor of that building. The hotel is owned by Seidel Group. They have three hotels in Manhattan, the Nomad, the Freehand, and the Ace. This will be a new five-story hotel. Uh, the ground floor has a lobby and elevators. It's open twenty-four-seven, uh, with a hundred and seventeen, uh, guest rooms that are on floors two through five. There is no restaurant in the space that will be licensed as a hotel. There is an outdoor courtyard on the ground floor that has twenty-two tables and seventy seats. That courtyard is really just an extension of the lobby. It is not a restaurant. There's no food and beverage service in that outdoor courtyard. Um, the hotel, as I said, is open twenty-four-seven. We'll have room service, we'll have mini bars. The outdoor courtyard, uh, that's an extension of the lobbies hours, will be eight AM, closing at eight PM. With respect to parking and traffic, which I know you wanted us to address, there's no valet service, so there's no valet stand, there's no cutout. No cars will be parked in front of the hotel. The hotel will have security twenty-four-seven. That will include a doorman who will assist patrons who come to be dropped off and stay at the hotel, so that, that person will be able to assist them in the, with their baggage, uh, direct them where to park if they need a parking garage to keep the traffic moving and avoid any congestion on the street. Uh, there is a parking garage on Seventh Street, which is a three-minute walk. There are also twenty-one stacked parking spaces on Seventh Street side of the hotel, uh, which will be used uh, by employees so that they will not be parking anywhere on the street. As I said, security will be twenty-four-seven. There'll be two security guards per shift. Uh, shift seven AM to three PM, three PM to eleven, and eleven PM to seven AM. So that is the hotel license. Um, I, I, I just wanna mention that we also will be applying for a restaurant. Tom, I don't know if you want me to get into that or not, but
Well, you said it was on the roof, so.
Yes, yes, let me, let me address that. So that's a separate same ownership, also owned by the Seidel Group. Uh, it will be on, on the, on the eleventh floor, on the roof. There will be, uh, a full-service restaurant. It will have indoor space and-
Let me interrupt you. So, you said it was a five-story hotel, but the restaurant's on the eleventh floor, so what's going on?
There is university student housing in the intervening floors. That's not part of the hotel. That is not our space.
Who's university?
I believe it's, uh, graduate school. Um, I forgot. Andrew or Adam, can you weigh in on that?
It's Bard University.
What?
Bard. Bard.
Bard College, from up in upstate, Poughkeepsie?
Correct, and they have some, uh, o- other smaller areas in the city.
Okay.
So, um, the, the restaurant on the roof will be full-service restaurant. Indoors, there will be thirty-nine seats, two bars with sixteen stools. There are two terraces, outdoor terraces on either side, uh, with seventy-six seats at fourteen tables. The indoor space will be seven AM to two AM, and the outdoor space will be eight AM, and consistent with your guidelines, closing at eleven PM during the week, and one AM, uh, outdoors. We, um, also, uh, got a-
Um, your outdoor space is surrounded by-
The community board office.
Um, the outdoor space on the roof is, how is that surrounded? The glass panels, or is it?
Yes, the indoor space is fully closed in, uh, glass windows and, and, and doors.
No, but the outdoor space, like, how are you having your people not throw themselves off the roof, or bottles and cans off the roof?
There is going to be planters that will be, um, about four, you will, you won't be able to get within four feet of the, uh, of, of the railing of the roof.
Okay. Anybody else have questions out there?
I have a question. It's Maria Dahmerk. What are the cross streets of that hotel?
Uh, Metropolitan. Right, uh, two-nine-two North Eighth Street.
Okay, so it's Metropolitan. What's the other cross street?
Uh, I have Meeker and Havemeyer, is that right?
That's right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, Simon, I have a question.
Yes, Simon.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned about, you mentioned about a, a college, the same building as a bar. I mean, is that, that normal? Tom, is that the norm?
I, I didn't know that there was student housing going in that building, and, you know, NYU has student housing in all kinds of buildings. I don't, I don't know which, you know, I don't, you know, if they're customers of a restaurant, I guess, you know, they're gonna have to follow the liquor license rules, which presently are twenty-one. God knows what the city's gonna wanna push it down to, since they want everyone to be drinking, but-
Undergraduate or graduate? I, I thought it was graduate.
That's correct, yeah, it's graduate students.
It's a graduate program, so the students are over twenty-one.
I was a graduate student at twenty, so.
No, twenty to twenty-one.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Sante Machelli, um, what are the hour of, of operation, and also is gonna be there, um, music, amplified music?
So the hours of the indoor portion of the restaurant are seven, it's seven AM to two AM. The outdoor portion is eight AM to eleven PM during the week, and one AM on weekends for the, for the terraces. There'll be music inside. Um, they, we do want the opportunity to have a DJ probably on weekends that would be inside, and there may be some live music once, once or twice a week, inside.
Uh, and when you say inside, you said there is a glass partition that divide the outside from the inside?
Yeah, it's fully enclosed.
And it's gonna be soundproof glass, so there is no sound that's gonna, uh, protrude outside?
Correct. The, the inside space is a fully enclosed space.
But is he, is he going to be, uh, probably soundproof to eliminate any sound from propagating outside?
I don't know the exact specifications of the glass that's there, but it, it doesn't, it, it appears to be yes.
Okay, well, that could be definitely a concern for the community. Uh, the sound, the DJs, and, you know, the late hours and the live music. Uh, seeing the fact it's gonna be on the eleventh floor, and, you know, we, I believe the community had experienced a sound propagating, especially from this, uh, roof activity, but, thank you.
We can look into that and report to the committee when we go on a few weeks.
Any other questions?
I, I have a question.
When you, oh, when you come to the committee, if you can give us a better, a bit, a sense of what's around your hotel, um, so we can see what buildings might be impacted by any sound that's coming from up there.
Okay.
All right.
Iris?
Yeah, wh- where is this hotel going to be located? I'm sorry, I didn't have opportunity to read the agenda. I'm sorry, I didn't get that question.
Where's it located?
It's a two-nine-two North Eighth Street between Meeker and Havemeyer. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair? Yes. Mr. Bernstein, finish his presentation?
Yes.
Yes. Are there any other questions?
Okay, questions come up, get them to the committee before our meeting on the, you know, the twenty-first, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bernstein and your team. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next item on the agenda is, um, Arts District, New York, two-twenty-five Franklin Avenue.
Yeah, everyone, this is, item has been getting a lot of press about being a, an art center. Um, the concern, of course, is that's, it's listing itself as an entertainment venue with six hundred or more patrons, so our threshold is always two-fifty for the full board to hear what the, the item is gonna be, and I have questions that you may have, um, before the committee hears it, okay?
Thanks, Tom. Um, I am here. This is Phil Dorn, attorney with Pozetsky and Bookman, uh, representing the applicant, but I wanna make sure-
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Can it, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, great, so-
Now, um, before you start, I was looking at our agenda, and you're, the presentation is for Immersive Management and Services LLC, Doing Business Arts District, New York, and then on our new list, there's a thing called AD Williamsburg, Doing Business Arts District. Are those one in the same, or two different?
Correct, they're one in the same. There was a, a name change in the last month or two.
Okay.
Uh, before I begin, I just wanna make sure that Mark Ralph is present. Uh, he is the head of operations for, for Arts District, so I wanna have him here with me.
Uh, yeah, I'm here.
Great. Okay, uh, so like I said, I don't know if you guys were able to hear me a minute ago, but my name is Phil Dorn. I'm an attorney with Pozetsky and Bit Bookman, uh, and with me, like I just said, is Mark Ralph, who will be in charge of the operations for immersive management, uh, Doing Business Arts District, New York. AD New York is an immersive art venue located over at twenty-five Franklin Street, which is just north of, North Fifteenth Street, over on, uh, right by the water. Um, the venue will showcase different works, uh, different exhibits from acclaimed artists around the world. The goal is to focus on an immersive, mixed media show, uh, and curated art, as well as artificial intelligence, technology, science, music, film, you name it, uh, they will have it. Additionally, Arts District, New York, uh, will feature the US premiere of a show called Limitless AI, uh, which comes from the creators of the award-winning Poetic AI, uh, which was a show that was seen by over one million visitors in Paris. Um, the venue will have a pre-show cafe inside, uh, that will have an alcohol component as well, and that's why we're before you, and that's why it will be before the SLA committee in a couple of weeks. Um, that'll be in the gallery area, uh, with, with, uh, a handful of tables and chairs inside, uh, which will be open at all hours of the day, um, to both visitors of the gallery and the exhibits, a- as well as just people who wanna stop in and, and enjoy a coffee and, a- and use it as, as a cafe. Um, the gallery will, will, will have an NFT gallery, a merchandise area, et cetera. Uh, so it's really gonna be this immersive art experience. Um, like Tom mentioned, the, the occupancy is just over seven hundred, which is why, uh, we're before you tonight, um, ahead of the SLA committee meeting in a couple of weeks. I'm happy to discuss some of, uh, the more specifics about the application, such as hours of operation, and, uh, there's a little outdoor space that I'm happy to explain, but I'll, I'll let you guys, uh, ask if, if, if you have questions about that. Um, the team, the last thing I'll say is that the team-
Phil?
Yep.
All right, just like the hotel, issues are gonna be traffic, um, cars dropping people off, um, whether you're gonna have a cutout for people to be dropping off, um, how people are getting there, crowd control, if there are crowd issues, you know, the, the standard large operating space, what's the controls, just, you know, what kinds of securities are gonna be, things like that.
Right, thanks. Um, this is a very, this is a very, a rare desolate street, um, in the Greenpoint-Williamsburg border. Uh, it's actually not even a five-hundred-foot case. Um, and there aren't residences on the block. Uh, but with that said, the team plans to employ several experienced professional security guards to manage and organize entry and exit into the venue, um, to manage crowds. Uh, they will be employing staggered, um, ticket times when there are ticketed events, um, when they're, when the show is going on, uh, to try to control crowds so they're not all accumulating at once outside the venue. Um, as far as pickup and drop-off goes, um, that's just straightforward. There, there, there will be, uh, drop-off service outside the venue, but like I said, there are no residences on the block, so we don't anticipate that it will have any material impact on the, uh, foot traffic or pedestrian traffic or the noise in the area.
Hey, Tom, could I just, uh, it's Giovanni Damato. Could I just say something?
This is, they're here, you raise your hand, and that, the chair will, you know, I can't see you guys, so.
If it's okay, Chair Fuller?
Yeah, it's for questions, yes.
All right. So, um, Phil, um, I just got a quick question. It's not a desolate part. You have housing all around this building. Um, there's housing, Cooper Houses is one block away. Uh, further down, you have many houses, many six-family houses. So it's not a desolate part of the, uh, uh, the border, or whatever, um, was said, so there, there will be, you know, adding seven hundred people on any given night is going to, to change, so you know, that is a concern for those of us who are living in this desolate part of, uh, you know, the city. Um, but the other thing is this, what are you gonna do about, you know, you're gonna have to hire all these people, so what kinda outreach is being done to make sure that people from the community get priority to not only go into, you know, the exhibits, uh, that you guys are gonna have, but also, uh, with employment?
Yeah, so I, I just wanna start off by saying I apologize. I didn't, I didn't mean it in an offensive way about calling the, the, the area desolate. That was probably a poor choice of words. I just meant that in the, in the legal term of saturation, it is not a five-hundred-foot case. There aren't, there aren't, uh, three or more licensed establishments within five hundred feet. Um, as, and as far as residences go, again, I didn't mean desolate, uh, at the, at the micro level. I just meant that on the, the specific block of Franklin, just north of North Fifteenth, uh, there aren't any residential buildings, but, but you are completely correct, Giovanni, that, um, past North Fifteenth, so we're on, we're on, uh, like I said, on, on Franklin, but past North Fifteenth, there are a few residential buildings about a block and a half north, um, as well as east. Um, y- your next question, which I'm, I'm now blanking on, was, um-
Local hiring?
Right, outreach. Uh, so far, the team has, has done a, a solid job of, of going around soliciting petition signatures. Uh, they're still in the process of doing more outreach. They have about fifty signatures, uh, to date. Um, from, uh, they're, they're trying to get in contact with as many, uh, tenants in the nearby area as they possibly can. Uh, in addition to that, um, we're open to suggestions if there are any block associations, or, or simply just, uh, individual residents that, that would like to meet with us from now until the, the committee meeting in a few weeks. We, we would love to do that. Uh, I think the goal with this project is to really become a staple in the neighborhood. It's not to become this, um, a tourist destination, or, or destination for, for outsiders, while of, of course, we're, we're looking to, to have a successful business. The goal is, is to really be a welcome neighbor in the community. So that's why we have this, this cafe that I, I kinda touched on a few minutes ago, that is, i- is open to the local neighbors, um, when, when there are shows going on, or when there aren't shows going on. There's gonna be free Wi-Fi for people to come in and sit and have a coffee, and do work, et cetera, so we really, the goal is to put down roots in this community, um, to be a, a cultural center in the neighborhood. Um, and, and the last point about employment, where it kinda goes to what I was saying about reaching out to, to block associations and residents. We, we would love if, if, if there are any groups that, that are, um, that would love to discuss employment opportunities. We would love to do that.
Phil, you're sounding very Manhattan.
Um, Madam Chair, oh, sorry.
Wait, wait, wait. Now, you're not that far from the future Bushwick Inlet Park, correct?
Uh, you'd have to point out on the map where that is.
Well, you're got a building, and you're talking about block associations. There's no block associations. There's Friends of, uh, Williams the Park. There's Bushwick Inlet Park. There is Saint Nick's. There are- there are a number of larger community groups. I would hope that maybe if you're going to have open space, you'll reach out to, there's a lot of youth leagues that are that use the parks not far from there. Do you have, everybody, can you picture where this building is? Because all I can picture is it's that black building over there on Franklin Street that looked like, I don't know, what that what was in there before?
It was House of Vance.
Right, House of Vance.
And it's next to Pop's Popular Clothing.
Right, so some of you know that neighborhood better, you know.
I know that neighborhood, Tom, if you allow me.
I'm just thinking about, you know, there's a lot of stuff around there that they could get involved with if they're going to be there to support the neighborhood, and they're not block associations. There's a lot of other stuff going on, but, you know, it's not my. Go ahead, Manchalet, Sante.
Yeah, you know, Phil, I have to say, because I live a couple of blocks away, I want to remind all the board member there is an historic district there, a national historic district, the Greenpoint Historic District. It's only a few blocks away. There is a Greenpoint Coalition and a coalition of block association, which are Oak Street, Noble Street, Milton Street, and so on, in a very low scale building. I lived there. I never thought it was a low density, and that's an extremely important passage, as Tom Barrow has just mentioned. Another mention, there is a Bushwick Inlet Park. It's also a very important passage because that's how we transition from Greenpoint. There is a bike lane, which we struggled to have it for years. And I have memory when House of Vance was there, and not only me, the community had memories of the impact that that House of Vance create many times with a line and queue of people that they were standard for miles on that sidewalk, obstructing the bike lanes and activity and noise and music on the street and music inside and graffiti, because the type of venue with skateboard, there is all definitely not a nice history when there were some event there. I know it's great to hear about art, but definitely when we talk about more than seven hundred people and and this type of of activity, I believe there is a community there. I I've been one of them, member and many member have been very active, especially in regard to legal license. I know you mentioned about possibility for neighbors to use a cafeteria. We have so many cafeteria, so many restaurant, so many of the places. I'm really welcome art activity galleries. They would be great. They close at nine o'clock. I've been to millions of opening in Chelsea, all over the city, in Brooklyn, even in Brooklyn, Williamsburg, in Greenpoint, when there were so many galleries, which were very vital to the art community. But here, what I sense as an active community board member, an active member of the specific community, I sense that there is an element of concern, and this will require a sense of clarification. And there is affordable house that just opened into the market with just two blocks away from there, hundreds of units, which are already threatened from other potential activity and music that is happening on the waterfront and and boats that arrive on the waterfront and alcohol over. So, you know, those are concerning element, and hopefully, we're going to have an opportunity as a community to have clarification about that.
Thank you, Sante. We we certainly hear those concerns and we appreciate them, and we will do our best to address them come come a couple of weeks from now.
Thank you, Madame Chair.
Area John, I also have some concerns.
Yeah. Okay, well, no, raise your hand or, you know, whatever.
Okay. I, I co-chair Friends of Bushwick Inlet Park, and Bushwick Inlet sits adjacent to that property. You know, and it's a it's a beautiful passive park section that's going to probably open in the next two years. So might be kind of a, you know, cultural conflict to have, you know, really intense entertainment venue next to this naturalistic area. So maybe there's, you know, the your group and our group maybe can, you know, contact each other and talk about how that might best play out. And the other thing is the bike lane. There's a mostly, you know, protected bike lane. It's a very active bike lane that traverses right in front of the the building. And there's some, you know, some, a couple of cutout areas there, but I'm just worried with a, you know, massive influx of people and cars, people getting in and out of cars, that that's going to cause a quagmire there.
Thank you, Steve.
Is there a bike group? Because I I believe that they would should meet with the Friends of Bushwick Inlet Park. That's why I brought it up. And they should meet with Greenpoint Coalition. But is there a bike or transportation or something grouped? Because that is going to be a problem. And people are going to get creamed getting out of their cars.
Uh, Tom, it's Katie Denny Horwitz. I I had my hand up, but I think the Greenway, the Brooklyn Greenway Initiative, you know, B G I, would be great. We're on, we as North Brooklyn Parks Alliance are part of their coalition. So they are kind of the stewards of the bike lane along Bushwick Inlet Park, along the whole waterfront. And so, Phil, you know, again, North Brooklyn Parks Alliance, we work also with Friends of Bushwick Inlet Park. We'd love to be part of that conversation. You know, we've been involved in parks along the waterfront and also recently managing Bankers Anchor, which is just up the street, yet another open space. So super interested in your open space plans as well as, you know, being a cultural venue. So looking forward to talking more.
Great. This is this is exactly what we were looking for. This is exactly why we're before you guys today, so we can make these introductions and these these relationships ahead of the whole S L A process. Steve, Katie, Sante, we will be certainly reaching out to you folks as well as.
And me, one more. Well, I'm I'm Mary. I didn't get to you yet.
And Mary, of course.
Are you finished?
Yes, go, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. I live a few blocks in the opposite direction, and the only subway that your visitors might be using is on North Seven or perhaps Nassar Avenue, the G train. In order to get to your venue, they've got to pass quite a number of blocks, residential blocks. The other concern is that we only have Kent Avenue to get around by car or walking or biking. And the traffic jam on Kent Avenue is phenomenal. It takes over a half hour to go from Williamsburg to Greenpoint now. Open Street is Berry Street, which doesn't allow any traffic. So there are going to be tremendous impacts in this community as a result of that venue. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you, Phil. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Next item on the agenda is Swingers. One eighteen North Eleventh Street, AKA Fifty-Six Berry Street. Restaurant mini golf.
Yeah, hi, Donald Bernstein again for this applicant. And my client Jeremy Simmons should be on here as well.
I am. Hi, everyone.
Okay, so so Swingers is a brand that Jeremy created a number of years ago. It's an indoor mini golf facility for adults with extensive food court style gourmet food and beverages. Jeremy started Swingers in London, now has two locations there, one in Washington, D.C., and one newly opened on West Twenty-Ninth Street in Manhattan. They're all larger venues and premium residential areas, and Jeremy and his team are highly experienced in managing and operating this type of venue. They have not had any issues or problems with the residents in their communities in the years that they have been operating. The space here will have three full mini golf courses entirely indoors. It will also have seating for three hundred and fifty people, for up to three hundred and fifty people for eating and drinking. Jeremy is partnering with some top-notch food and beverage operators to provide the premium food for the venue. When you want to go to the facility and 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 do the mini golf, ninety percent of it is pre-booked or reserved. Only ten percent or less are walk-ins. So this allows Swingers and the team to control the people that are there, the people that are entering, and the people that are exiting to avoid any undesirable impact on the community, whether it's or even inside the facility. They're developed a method of doing this, and they've been doing it for years successfully. They don't have lines outside, but if there was a crowd or people gathering, they have space indoors to accommodate a line by the reception so that there would not be any lines outside. We've attached to our questionnaire a detailed five-page security plan. They will be using All-Star, a licensed security company, and that report details all of the security measures, including security personnel, as detailed as the attire they have to wear, their process for verification verification of proper age, the communications between all of the security personnel. They're going to have a closed circuit TV system, liaison with the local precinct, and a number of of other things that they're going to be doing. All of that is detailed in the report. The space will also be treated acoustically. They have someone that has done that for all of their spaces, and they have not had any problems, even though they are in residential areas. The hours will be, and the space, by the way, it was is now a vacant warehouse. It was a beer distribution center. The hours are noon to two A.M. Monday through Friday and ten A.M. to two A.M. Saturday, Saturday and Sunday. There are parking lots nearby. I think there are two just on North Twelfth Street. There are others. Although based on experience, most people will be arriving by public transportation or by taking a taxi or an Uber. So it's a great experience. The people that go to Swingers love it. It's mini golf-like. You've never seen it before. I hope you get a chance to look at some of the photos that we've attached. And I know that Jeremy and his team are are looking forward to coming to Williamsburg.
Any questions? Oh, Lincoln, you had your hand up by the previous speaker, or you had a hand up, questions on the items that we're discussing, or?
No, no questions on Adams. I was just hoping to say hello whenever the opportunity presented itself.
Okay, I'll thank you. You're welcome. Tom?
Okay, so is it the one-story building or is it the loft building with the bottom floor?
The building has a three-story office building over a portion of it, and then it has a one-story building connected to it. And it's so it sits be under the three-story office building and partly in the single-story building.
Okay, so what streets is that between? So everybody knows where it is.
The entrance is on North Eleventh Street, and then it's on, and then it borders Berry Street.
And the other, yeah, but it's almost, it's like two-thirds of the block, isn't it? What's the others?
Let me bring up the map in a second.
So there's a lot of residences around there. So have you been petitioning and notifying all those buildings?
We are.
Yeah, we're going to do that. I I I think that Jeremy started with another representative who was supposed to appear at the committee, and that wasn't done. So the answer, Tom, is no. But between now and when we see you next, we will.
Because on the other end of the block is Brooklyn Brewery, right?
Right.
Okay, and across the street is the whiskey, whatever. Somebody help me out who hangs out over there. Does everybody know this block? Somebody?
Yes, what what specifically are you asking? Like, just what's around there or?
Well, I'm just, you know, it's a big venue in the middle of a bunch of other big venues, and there's a lot of traffic, but there's also a lot of new residential buildings going up around it. So, you know, I don't know how the neighbors over there are dealing with it, if they're going to be, you know, we got to make sure we got input from over there. So that's not my part of the world. So I'm just checking with people who know this building. So I got a clue what it is. It's a big, it's a big, big, it's like two-thirds of a block. So it's a lot of building.
What's the exact address again?
One eighteen North Eleven. It's between Berry and I guess, what's the other, what's the street that all the hotels are on? Wythe?
Wythe.
The Brooklyn Brewery. Yeah, it's so it's similar to like the 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 place with the bowling alleys and the drinking and eating, yes?
I think you're referring to Brooklyn Bowl, and say we on, we're similar in that we combine food and beverage with an activity, but we're dissimilar in that that is much more like a nightclub and it has live music. And we don't, and it's very much, that's a very much a standing environment. And this is not that. This is people seated, eating, drinking, very upscale. And then the only people walking around the space are the people walking to play their mini golf and being on the course. So it's a much more sedate environment than Brooklyn Bowl.
Okay.
I mean, Tom, just to answer, Tom, just to answer your question, I mean, I, it's Katie, I, I mean, I I work a block away. I live about a ten-minute walk away. I don't consider that particular block residential. I mean, it is mostly venues. I hate to put her on the spot, but I don't, Corey, maybe you have a better sense of the folks who live within a few blocks from there and if how they're feeling.
I, this is Mary of John Rick. Again, I live a few blocks away. It's it's nightlife. It's it's Club Row. It is impossible to walk through past past midnight. We can hear our, we can feel our homes shaking from the beat that we hear in the clubs and on the roofs. There is a a club across the street from Brooklyn Bowl. That whole area is known as Club Row. Okay, congested, traffic-y, loud, noisy crowds. And when they're done, they're screaming through residential neighborhoods to get to to the subway or wherever else they're going. It is a nightmare.
Mary, can I can I just reassure you that this is not that at all for two reasons? One, this, we don't have the density of people that you have in a nightclub. Because of our booking system, people gradually filter in to play the golf, and then they gradually leave, and it's dispersed across the entire operations. And so all those issues that you're talking about, one is crowd dispersal, because you get three, four, five hundred people on the street all at one time. We don't have that. We disperse people in groups of twenty across an entire day. Second concern was noise concerns to do with bass and things vibrating. We work with K P Acoustics, who are an acoustic engineering company. They've done every single one of our projects. We have done projects in, let's say, office buildings, residential buildings, and we've never had any noise complaints because we put proper acoustic mitigation measures in place in all of our spaces. So I'm hopeful that we will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood that is the antidote to exactly what you're talking about, rather than a nightclub coming into this space.
Well, I can appreciate that. However, the point is saturation. We are oversaturated. Even bringing one or two more people is too much at this point. If anyone has has walked that area or driven that area at midnight or or around that area, you would know exactly what I meant. And people want to sleep. People do not need hordes of people running up and down streets and destroying property, throwing cans, screaming, yelling. It happens all the time. I live here. I know. So I appreciate what you're saying, but I'm talking about saturation and oversaturation. Thank you.
Also, Madame Chair, if I can be recognized, to be specific.
Yeah, I had my hand up for quite some time, and everyone has spoke past me. Hi, this is Julia.
I don't see your hand.
Why, Julia? No problem. I don't have the little symbols, so I didn't put it up.
You have to go to where participants is, and there's a little hand up there. You have to open up the participants panel, and the little hand is to your right.
Okay, I don't see him, but I know who you're talking about.
Okay, go ahead.
I see everybody's name, but not the symbol.
The symbol is below.
Found it. Thank you, Madame Chair.
You're welcome.
Hi, Julia. Phew, I had one question because I missed it. Everyone is speaking like really low, and I can't hear you. Your operation of hours on Saturday and Sunday, I did not hear that. Tell me those.
Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 a.m.
At 2:00 a.m.?
Correct.
My other question was, you, you have this, I've been to one of these venues out in Red Hook, and they do make appointments, and pretty quiet. My question is, when you have these bookings, and you're saying you're an adult venue, will it be also children-friendly at some point of the day? Because when I went to the one I went to was my great nephew's birthday party, and he was five.
This is an over-21 venue. We don't believe that, we do about, a large portion of our business is corporate pre-booked events, and so it's a very uncomfortable licensing mix, which we don't believe in if you put children in alongside people drinking alcohol. And so we.
At that time of the day, they didn't serve alcohol. It was in the afternoon.
Yeah, we are, we're an over-21 venue.
Okay. And 2:00 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday? Those were the hours?
10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm hoping that's a mistake, and it's Friday and Saturday, but we'll see.
Madam Chair. This is Maria Viera. I'd like to be recognized after. There was someone whose hand was up.
I don't see hands up.
I tried to speak before. I couldn't find my hand.
Sante, Sante, I'd like to speak after.
It's in the participant list. Look at the bottom, the tissue. You got a little hand, you got something that looks like a little horn. Click on the raised hand.
Mine is not working.
Mine is not working either, Madam Chair. That's why I didn't want it to wrap. But very fast to interject, fast to, a statement was made that is true. There is a lot of commercial activity, and I believe this is a peculiarity of our commercial overlay, but there is also hundreds of residential units. I can mention some, actually. I know very well the area. I couldn't picture exactly. So I'm going back to the map. There, where I rent my Zipcar, 34 Berry Street, just the rear of that building has hundreds of units. They overlook through their garage. There is a ramp going down. It's literally there, and there's so many other residential units all around, which have windows in different floors, different heights. So just to confirm what Mary was mentioning, there is residential units all around there, yes, and there is the hotel, and there is the Brooklyn Brewery. And definitely, there is a general issue of oversaturation of, you know, entertainment venue bar restaurant. So residential units are there, and there are hundreds of residential units there. Thank you.
Maria Viera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Jeremy. Jeremy, you mentioned that you're operating on a staggered schedule. You'll never see more than 20 people at a time. However, the venue has a capacity of up to 350 people. So what, what was the intention of opening a venue that has a 350-person capacity if you're operating on a staggered schedule with only 20 people per time?
My, my response wasn't you're going to have 20 people per time. I'm saying that there's no more than 20 people coming in and out of the space at any one time. So a lot of the issues related to these large-capacity venues are because everyone arrives and disperses at the same time. So this is, so that is a very different dynamic of our business, because we tee people off every five minutes, like a golf course, in groups of four. So it means by the natural flow of through the venue, by the time people eat, drink, play golf, everyone is leaving very gradually, typically in groups of 20, dispersed through the entire day. But the occupancy is much larger than that within the building.
That concludes your question, Maria.
Yes, thank you for the explanation, but I, if I may add, my concern is the same as Mary Adomir. This is oversaturation. We're talking about a 700-person venue on North 15th and Franklin, not 350 on North 12th and Berry. And I understand that, you know, it's not necessarily next to each other, but the areas are close enough, and so many other things that are actually happening, that I'm, I'm very concerned about what this community is going to look like. I'm concerned about what it looks like now, much more about what it's going to look, how it's going to look in a year, two years, where it's just, it's just overflowing, and, and I don't know at what point it's going to cease. That is all from me.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. I raise my hand.
I can't see you. Go ahead.
So my question is like the same one that Maria just asked you, but I want to be more specific. Why are you renting a bigger space, like the one that you rent, if you're not going to use the whole space? Why are you paying so much rent, which I assume for a space that you're only going to use, or people, only going to be 20 people at the same time? It doesn't make any sense. So something doesn't match.
No, I'm trying to, I'm talking about the ingress and egress. We 100% will use the entire space, and it's the occupancy as per the application, as Donald explained. But the different dynamic of this is that we don't have, unlike a large bar or nightclub, we don't have all these people turning up at one time and crucially leaving at the same time later at night, causing issues. So it's not that the occupancy is not used. The occupancy is used, but you don't have the same inflow and outflow of people all at the same time. Does that make sense?
Honestly, no. You know, that's your answer. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Crystal?
Yes. How many jobs would this venue create, and what's going to be the average salary of the person working there? And are you going to give people from the community an opportunity to work there?
Typically, we create 150 jobs per venue. Typically, people will be earning roughly $30 an hour, and we will absolutely be engaging with the community to drive applications and create employment.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you've done outreach before the next meeting. Madam Chair, before you come to the committee, you better have outreach to places like various jobs programs in the neighborhoods, St. Nick's. You know, Crystal, if you have some organizations that you could recommend for them to reach out to before they come to the committee to say that they've met with those groups about employing people or training people. I know there's a lot of job training programs in the food service business that they could connect to, so.
Just going to the buildings in the neighborhoods, there's a lot of large developments in the neighborhoods, and distributing flyers, maybe some sort of like open house event for the community so people can attend and like get information and apply, just some sort of outreach on a larger scale so that people from this community could benefit in some way, shape, or form.
Well, I would think like places like Al Puente, and La Suris, and St. Nick's would, you know, be a little bit more focused. We don't encourage Craigslist hiring.
Can you say hi to my aunt?
Go ahead, Maria.
I'm just curious, going there, how much does it cost to, to do the golf and whatever? What, what is that all about?
Roughly $20 for a round of golf.
Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? No other questions. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman, you ready to speak now? Councilman? Lincoln, are you there? Okay, moving on. We have the elections at 8 o'clock. Liquor license, do we have any speakers on liquor license? You have anything you want to add to your liquor license list?
I was just looking at it quickly. Number 16 is going to be on our report today, so that's off the list. And I'm going to have to try and find out if anybody has information about this thing called Palm Sunrise on Scott Avenue, which is saying an event space. I have no idea what the size of that is, so that may be one of those. I'm going to have to come back and make a presentation. But please go through the list on the renewals people, and if you know any problem locations, or wonderful locations, or whatever, let us know, so we can address the, any concerns that there are. So that's it with that list. I don't know if there's people speaking on items on our report later, and when that would be. I guess that's at another point.
We have speakers for liquor license, Joanna?
Yes. Andrea, Andrea Ford?
I just wanted to apologize. I was on the subway, but I'm, I'm here if I'm able to say hello for a second. Madam Chair, do you mind if I?
That person is not on, Joanna?
No.
Okay, go ahead, Lincoln.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for excusing me, and I'm sorry about that. So I just wanted to thank everyone at Community Board One for your service, and congratulate the new appointees. It looks like we have some really meaningful turnover, and a lot of people who have contributed years of expertise and service to our community are, have stepped down. And so there's big shoes to fill for, for the new representatives. I'm really excited about the folks that our office were able to appoint, and I want to congratulate you all. And, you know, for sure, me and my team are here as a resource to all the members of CB1, if we can be of assistance in any way, and of course, to the communities as a whole. Just a few quick updates. One, we introduced a really exciting package of bills this past week to try to rein in placard abuse. And, you know, we have tens of thousands of city, state, and federal workers and contractors each and every day that are driving their personal vehicles and parking them wherever they want because they put a placard or a parking vest or something in the dashboard. It's petty corruption. We can stop it. Our package of bills does just that, so we're really excited to be pushing those forward. Wanted to also mention, we wrote a letter to Deputy Mayor Maria Torres Springer about a week or two ago, with councilmembers Alexa Aviles from Sunset Park, Jen Gutierrez, the Borough President, Antonio Drenoso, Community Board Six and Seven. I know that CB1 has a thorough and rigorous process before signing on to letters, but the purpose of the letter was around the topics of your previous presentations. It's really about revisiting our protections for IBZs, ensuring that we are more robustly and rigorously protecting our industrial spaces, and modernizing M-zones appropriately. So the mayor indicated he's, he's going to be creating an industrial working group. It's time for him to convene that working group and get to work, because we have a lot to do. And, you know, we have, in the past number of years, there was a North Brooklyn Industrial Innovation Plan that had been considered, to kind of update and modernize and protect our IBZs in Eastern Greenpoint, and East Williamsburg, and to Bushwick. And I think it's time for us to revisit that again in partnership with Councilmember Gutierrez and the Borough President. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention, we've made some progress on land use items that have come through CB1. These were all items that certified for application during Councilmember Levin's term. So unfortunately, I, me and my team didn't have as much of an opportunity to shape them in a constructive way as we would have hoped, but I did want to just share back with you some reporting, some, some updates, so you know what's happened to the things that have crossed your desks as they came to mind. Firstly, was 103 Lee in South Williamsburg. We did remove the site across the street at 100 Lee from the rezoning, so that we would avoid displacing about a dozen small businesses there. That site, when it was proposed to CB1, was all one and two bedrooms. We were able to get the developer to include six three-bedrooms in the final plan, out of the few dozen units that are being constructed there, so they'll better meet the family sizes and the needs of the community in South Williamsburg. We were also able to make some progress on the Broadway Triangle. We disposed of a piece of city property so that St. Nick's, and La Suris, and UJO, and Riseburg, together, the diversity of our community, will be able to move forward on the construction of 100% affordable housing over at the Broadway Triangle. We're really excited about that. And then thirdly, over at 840 Marmer, at the corner of Marmer and Driggs in Greenpoint, we were able to meet the community board's demands and secure 35% of the housing there as affordable. Not the deepest AMI, but we got them to 80% AMI on that project. And we were also able to get the developer to commit to up to $1 million for a brand-new, state-of-the-art dog run at McCarren Park. So we'll be releasing more information on that soon. But we're going to finally have a dog run that the residents of Greenpoint and the North Side deserve at McCarren, thanks to this development. So one of, you know, none of these were perfect projects, but we were able to negotiate terms that I think will yield tangible benefits to the community. And I really want to thank the CB1 Land Use Committee and the whole team at CB1 for helping us set the framework for, for good deals on, on those projects. So I know you've got a lot on your agenda, so I just wanted to share all that briefly, and thank you as always for the opportunity to say hello.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Okay, Carter Reston, Speaker. Carter, Speaker Joanna, please.
Yes. The next speaker is Ayona. Hello, Ayona, you're on, unmuted?
Hello. Yes, hi. I'm talking about the liquor store, and the liquor license for the establishment on 126A Nassau Avenue. I did not have a chance to speak when you guys talked about accepting that license, but I'm really concerned that, you know, there is that many bars around right across on McGuinness Boulevard. We're really concerned about the noise at night, especially on the weekend, and as well as, you know, we know that sometimes when, you know, when, when the particip, when you go to the bar and you watch the, if there's any games, people scream, and we've had that experience at a different location on, on Manhattan Avenue, where there were soccer games, and people were screaming well into the, like, early hours in the morning. And so like, you know, we, we are, McGuinness Boulevard is a very, very nosey street, so we are worried that this is gonna just add to the noise pollution. And so we are very much against that establishment. That's it?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Tavis Bulkey. Tavis Bulkey, they're not answering the call. That is, that is it for the speakers for liquor license.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our public session. We'll move right into our board meeting. Can we have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Can I have the roll call, please, Jerry?
Gina Argento?
Here.
Bogdan Bakarowski?
Here.
Lisa Bamanthi?
Gina Param?
Here.
Eric Brusades? Tom Burrows?
Oh, yeah, here, sorry.
Iris Cabrera?
Here.
Phil Capone?
Here.
Frank Corbone? Frank Corbone? Stephen Chesler?
Yeah.
Michael Chiracella? Teresa Cinciatto? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronald Dally? Giovanni Damato?
Here.
Erin Drinkwater? Arthur Dibinowski?
Here.
Lloyd Feng?
Here.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Here.
Chairperson Fuller?
Here.
Crystal Garcia?
Here.
Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross? David Heimlich? Sabrina Hilt? Katie Denny Horwitz?
Here.
Sonia Iglesias? Moisha Indig? Robert Jeffrey?
I'm having trouble. Sonia's here.
Moisha Indig? Robert Jeffrey? Bozena Kaminski? Bozena Kaminski?
Here.
Thank you. Corey Canton?
Here.
Paul Kelteborn?
Here.
William Claggsbald?
Here.
Yo Landau? Marie Lianza?
Yeah.
Yo Lo? Trina McKinnon? Adam Myers?
Here.
Dante Michelli?
Here.
Toby Moskowitz? Rabbi Niederman? Karen Neves? Mary O'Donoghue? Janice Peterson?
I'm here.
Bella Sable?
I'm here, too.
Here. I'm here.
Isaac Soffer? Dell Teague? William Vega?
Here. Vega's here.
Maria Vietta?
Present.
Simon Weiser?
Here.
Thirty members answering the call.
Thank you, Jerry. Can I have an approval of your agenda? Pardon me?
Chair, I wanted to say something important.
Yes, Simon.
Something doesn't sound right. Some, many board members were, were, were taken off the list here as members because they didn't get their renewal notices or they didn't know about it. I mean, specifically, I would like to mention, like, Steve Wyberg, he, he's, he, like, he was not reappointed. And he didn't get a, he didn't get a reappointment letter, like, reminder that was said, was supposed to be getting. And some, something still makes sense here. Some very active board members were removed, and they didn't know that's coming. You know, I think we have to find out why this, this thing occurred. Something is, doesn't sound right.
Thank you, Simon. Can I have approval of your agenda?
Make a motion to approve, Julia Foster.
Take a second. Who made the motion to approve?
Mr. Gross?
Gross in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentance? Motion carried. Now approval of the minutes?
Madam Chair, I have a question about quorum.
Yes.
I, it appears, because we're on this, you know, Hollywood Squares way of doing meetings, and like was just mentioned, there's a number of new board members and a lot of missing board members. And I don't have, recall ever receiving a list as of April 1st of what our board is, who is on our board, and are they sworn in?
Yeah, I haven't been swearing them in since we've been on, on virtual.
Yeah, but if we have a lot of new members and they're voting, have they been sworn in to uphold all the things they're supposed to uphold? I don't know who, I, I don't know how many new board members there are. I don't know what old board members left. We're looking at little squares and we're doing serious business. And it'd be nice if the new people were sworn in and we had a list of who's, who we're voting with. I have absolutely no idea who's on the board anymore.
We're going by the list that Borough Hall sent us. This is the list that Borough Hall sent us. Jerry's calling all the names.
Yeah, but we didn't get it. We're members on the board. We're voting. And a quorum requires members that are recognized. In the past, we've sworn people in before they vote. Now we're just having names coming from Borough Hall and we're allowing, you know, they're voting without any kind of acknowledgement that any of us even know that they're new. It's just like we got, we're hearing new names and we're all voting. And I have no idea what's going on here, and I would challenge the quorum.
Well, Jerry called the roll call. According to the quorum, we have a roll call.
I don't think those members are sworn in. I don't think they're real members until they raise their hand and swear themselves in.
They don't have to be sworn in by us, Tom. They're appointed by the Borough President.
And that's it?
They're appointed by the Borough President.
And there's like, oh-
The applicant process is conducted by Borough Hall. The Borough President makes the appointments at the recommendation of a percentage of the board by the individual council people. And we receive a list, period.
And then why did we, why did we have to stand in front of the room and swear in then? What was the point?
I think, Tom, that's a very important point. We have to act on this.
I'd like to have, like, the Law Department tell us, like, you know, everybody else who's representing the City of New York has to swear in. I don't get how a community board member just gets put on a list and shows up. We, when we had live meetings, had to stand in front of the room and swear in. Swear to the Constitution of the City of New York, the Charter of the City of New York, the Constitution of the State of New York. And now it's just put names on a list and send them to us?
And adding to Tom's point, this is Jan, Madam Chair, is that, first of all, it's, it's really impolite for us to be sitting in a room and not know who's been new, who's come in, welcome people. I mean, we need to have decent protocols for how we operate. And I know you're not meaning anything, Jerry or De Ellis, but I think that all this requires us to, to at least mention to Borough Hall and to our having, what is our protocol for welcoming a new person?
May I speak? This is William Vega. This is my, be my second term. So the first term, I was sworn in by Zoom meeting, Zoom meeting. And then on the 23rd, I go to Borough Hall to be sworn in for my second term. So I know some new members haven't been sworn in yet. So this is an issue that needs clarification.
We haven't sworn in members since we've been going virtual.
No, the Borough Hall did this.
Borough Hall swears in. You know, we did it at Borough, at, at our meetings as a formality. So I don't know if we're-
But I see, we can have our own rules, De Ellis, about welcoming new people to the board, so that everybody in the room that's on this board knows who's there and who's new. Who are they? We don't even know who they are. You know, we have to have bios on people. I mean, this is getting a little, this is getting, I, I can't blame all Borough Hall. It's how we want to conduct our business. You know, they're not gonna say we can't be nice to people and welcome them and know who they are.
Well, I, I was gonna welcome them once I get the agenda and everything cleared out.
So you're agreeing that this is not a good-
Whoever's new, I, I'd like to see their faces. I don't know who's behind those names.
But they don't know you guys, just like you don't know them.
I'm showing my face. I'm showing my face.
Look at that beautiful face, Julia Foster's face.
Hello.
Very, very least, can we get a fresh, you know, current member list distributed to all the members?
And who appointed them, for how long? And, and we have our own protocol to welcome people and introduce ourselves. And maybe at the next meeting, if you don't want to do it at this meeting. But people on the board are raising serious questions about, do we have a quorum or anything else? And you didn't cause this, Jerry. So we're looking at, how do we let Borough Hall know that we, what we need to know who's coming and who they are?
Also, Jan, if I can say something else, because I heard from the office that, to be honest, the office wasn't aware who was appointed and who was reappointed. I, I, me and probably many other people that were reappointed, we received an email, which was an individual email. But I remember my first appointment, there was a list, we knew all the people. I'm assuming the office this time didn't receive the list. Probably happened time by time, but it's not up to me. But I know I was aware that the office had the same question, that they weren't aware that I was appointed. They weren't aware that William, I, I remember, was appointed. We were aware, I, I didn't know that William was appointed. I knew I was only reappointed. And I believe, you know, this, to confirm, is definitely-
People were appointed before we got the list.
Yes, yes.
That's right.
And, and one, and one concern still that I have, I believe we have 50 members, and tonight, you know, we are still 30. So we continue to have a problem of attendance that we have not resolved. And I saw there were new name, they didn't even answer the roll call. So the attendance remain an issue. That's all.
Barry Ellis was trying to say something?
It was me, madam. I also never received any letter that said that I was continued to be part of the board. I just come to the meeting. Me, too.
I had to call. I had to call Borough Hall. What's going on?
I didn't receive one either.
Were you up for reelection, Iris?
I did a paperwork, but I never received a confirmation that said that I was continued to be part of the, of the board.
Right. You're on the list, that's why, you're on our list, that's why you're being called.
Okay.
I didn't receive, I didn't receive a letter either, and my application is in, but my name is called, so I imagine I'm on the board.
All, all the names we call are the, the people on the list that's on the board.
Okay, but can we take the points that people have brought forth, De Ellis, and put that in a letter to, to Borough Hall and just say that we're expressing concerns about the protocol of how we're doing it? If we're trying to strengthen community boards, which is my understanding, is the whole new thing, right? That we want, once again, we're gonna strengthen. We have to have procedures that people are welcomed. We know where, who they are, where they come from, how they got there, and a little bit more. I know this is a new Borough Hall, so they can make some mistakes right now, that's all right. But let's at least tell them what these points are. We have them in the minutes right now and send off a letter. I think, I don't know if Lacy Tauber is the one that's handling that. Could be. There's, it's all people we know. These are not some strangers down at Borough Hall. This is our own community leaders. I mean, Antonio, we worked with for years. So let's say how we are responding to what's happening. And not, this, not just to be critical, but to state, this is how it's happening. And we think it's really important, because he had a lot of thoughts about how people should be appointed and what they should do. So I'm sure he would like the feedback.
Okay, Jan, I need a motion to send a letter.
I make a motion that we send a letter taking the key points that the last-
I take them now. Is that a finished motion, please?
That we take the points, that, I don't want to have to remember them all. I'm not Steve. He's good at that. Steve, if you got them all, do it. But the points that people have been raising were reasonable points about the protocol for new people coming on and people leaving. Because I hate it just as much that somebody that did work for many years is leaving and we don't even say goodbye. I mean, we want to have a more cordial protocol for treating people that come on volunteering in a certain way. I think, I'd like that to be the tone of the letter.
And my, I, we need clarification, because our new members haven't been sworn in. So if they haven't been sworn in, can they vote, you know?
Let's put that in. That's all the points we've been raising. Right. William?
Can I say something to Dell Teague? I'm not clear on what this letter is really going to say. What is this? Isn't it up to us to have a, a protocol? I mean, are you asking the Borough President to dictate a protocol to us as sort of welcoming new people? I, I don't understand.
We're, we're talking about-
Must be legal requirements for, for the members of a community board, so that they are acknowledging that they're in service to the city and state of New York that we're not aware of. I mean, we, when we came in live to the board, we stood up in front of the room and swore in to the charter, the constitution, whatever. We don't, I mean, what is the, what is the Law Department want? They're always telling us how we can't get people off the board. How do they want people to come on the board?
I, I understand wanting to know whether we have, they have to be sworn in and, and what the legal questions are. But in terms of some kind of a welcoming protocol, I don't know what, are you, are you asking for the, I guess I don't understand what you, what you want in this letter.
We'd like to know who's on the board with us, like, where, you know, who they are, that's all.
And I just added another point, which may not be to the Borough President, that can go to our bylaw or whatever committee we have, that we need a new protocol ourselves. So we need two protocols, our own protocol of how we're welcoming and saying goodbye to people that work with us, volunteer time. And we need a letter to the Borough President about what we expect from the Borough President on the points that Tom raised and other people raised that are appropriate to them.
Well, I think also what's legally, what's legally required.
Promotion unless I know exactly what, what's on the letter. I, I've just, I'm not, it's not clear to me what, exactly what the points are that you want, um, the, our chair to put in a letter. I, I do understand that we want to know legally what someone has to do to be able to vote. Does the person have to be sworn in? Is that not a real requirement? Was that just something we did informally? That I can understand. But in terms of, and yes, I understand, we want to know who's on the board. We do know who's on the board now, because Jerry called the, the roll call. Are you saying that you want the Borough President to send us a, a listing of everybody who's been appointed? I, I, I'm not sure what you-
I just, I just sent the list to each member's individual email.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. But in terms of protocol and bi, bios and stuff, um, I don't know-
We don't have bios.
I, I, I know that. And I don't know that, you know, this is something we want to ask the Borough President.
We're not asking the Borough President that, Dell. I don't know why you're jumping.
Because, because it's unclear to me. These are the things you've been bringing up. I don't know what you want in the letter.
I just said I didn't want that in. I wanted the points appropriate to the Borough President in the letter. And then we can have people that would like to have a more welcoming board. I will write my own recommendations to the bylaw committee, but it's not a bylaw. I don't know where to take it, Dell, the fact that we need to treat people coming in and going out differently than we are doing. You-
I could jump in. My name is Corey Canton. I'm a new board member. This has been fun to listen to.
Welcome, Corey.
Hello. I, I did get an email, and I am not yet sworn in, so you guys can, you know, I can vote or not. I'm happy to be here. I think as a new board member, it would be great, in lieu of obviously in-person meetings, to, you know, have an email that went out that said, here are the other board members. I agree with you. It would be nice that, you know, we were able to be made acquaintances. You know, I imagine that in this new age, these things will get figured out and that these recommendations can be made to Antonio. In the meantime, I'm happy to be here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, Corey. So, Jan, you have all your points. Do everybody understand Jan's points that she wanted in this letter?
Obviously, they don't. I just said, the, the key points to the Borough President was in a letter. And those people don't like a different protocol. We will sub, I will submit my thoughts to the bylaw committee, and Julia can decide if they fit there or not. But we need our own protocol. I agree with Dell on that. But that does not change the fact that we need to know those points that we just said about new people coming on, who they are, you know, their terms of office, the, the, making their pledge, who can vote when, you know? That goes to the Borough President to reclarify how people are being appointed and what they have to do to vote.
Madam Chair?
According to the Borough President's order.
I'm sorry. I was trying to say something.
Sorry, Sonia.
I'm trying, yeah.
Were you trying to say something?
I'm sorry, Sonia.
Who has the floor? Who has the floor?
Well, Simon was talking over, Simon was talk, talking over, over Jan.
Yeah.
So I finally was able to raise my hand.
I, I couldn't raise mine. I'm trying to talk for the past five minutes.
It's on there. I see hands up. But mine's on the floor. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead, Simon.
Okay, I, I hear what, just to very clarify, I hear what Dell is saying. And I don't think this is, makes sense, what we want to do here. The list is there. Jerry just sent it to everybody. Everybody knows the term. And all the background checks, personal information, nobody has to know anything. They, they, we're all welcome to, all these new board members are welcome, like, we were welcome when we joined. It doesn't make sense what we're trying to do here. We're going to people's personal lives. I don't, I don't understand what's going on here. We should just, it's, it's going well till now, till, and it should, it had to on the same way. There's no need for all these kind of letters and legislations and all kind of, it doesn't make sense what we're doing here. I don't understand this.
Okay, Simon. Okay, Maria. No, Sonia, I'm sorry, then Maria.
I was trying to make a point on the bylaws. It doesn't indicate that after we're sworn in. They just have to get notification and given the bylaws, given, you know, the information about the meetings and the scheduling. But in, in no way does it say anything about they being sworn in to vote. Just that when they're coming to the board, they're given this information. I don't know if they retrieved it, copying the bylaws.
Everybody's got the package.
You got the package, but this- You got the package, but it doesn't say anything in the bylaws about they being sworn in to be eligible to vote. They've already been appointed, so I don't think that that should be an issue tonight.
Maria.
Well, now I'm going to go, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to what Tom originally said. Then why even, if that's the case, then why have people sworn in as we were in the past? Number one. Number two, I, I mean, what precludes us from doing a virtual swearing in? We've been doing, we, I mean, there's been some serious business taking place in this, at this board for the last two years virtually. So what is the difference now?
I'd like to speak. My name is Crystal Garcia. I'm also a new board member. And I received an email with the bylaws and the meeting information. I also received an email from Borough Hall asking me to RSVP for one of two dates for a swearing in ceremony at the Brooklyn Borough Hall. That's either taking place on June 23rd or July 16th. So the new board members will be sworn in. I don't make the rules. I'm happy to be here and be a part of the community board. It is my first meeting. It's been very interesting. And I look forward to working with you all so we could try to make some improvements in our community. And I'm born and raised in Brooklyn. I lived in Williamsburg, Bushwick my entire life. I still live here. I live in the North Side. I have a 19-year-old and I work for a labor union. So that's a little bit about me.
Thank you, Crystal. Welcome to the board.
Welcome to the board.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any other, since we're doing this, is any other new board members like to introduce themselves?
I know that, well, I'm Lloyd. I'm going to be really quick because I see David Heimlich has had his hand raised for a while. But I'll be very fast. I'm also a new appointee via the Borough President's office. Thank you, Crystal, for mentioning the email you got about the swearing in. I, I must have missed it over email. I've been living, I, I'm Lloyd. I'm a born and raised New Yorker. I grew up in Washington Heights. And I moved to Williamsburg last year. And so, you know, I re-upped our lease. I work for an Asian-American advocacy organization called the Coalition for Asian-American Children and Families based in Fidive. And yeah, so I'm going to pass it over to David since I see, I've been seeing his hand raised.
I don't see David's hand.
Oh, no, like, like physically on the.
Well, I don't see it on the board. Adam Myers.
Hi, everybody. My name is Adam Myers. I'm also a new board member. I am Director of Litigation at a legal services organization called Communities Resist. Both there and for several years before that at Brooklyn Legal Services Corporation A. I've been working with tenants and tenant associations in Williamsburg and Greenpoint. And it's really an honor to join you guys on CB1. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Adam. Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Nice to see you on the board, Adam.
Okay. Is there any other, Robert Jeffries?
David's been trying to speak.
Okay, David. David? Where's David?
His audio doesn't appear to be working.
I'll say for all rest of us, welcome, David.
Could I introduce myself also? This is Paul Kelterborn. Hi, everyone. I'm happy to join the board. My name is Paul Kelterborn. I'm a new member. I've been on the Transportation Committee as a public member for the past year. And I'm also one of the founders of Friends of Cooper Park and looking forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Paul. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, Paul. You did look familiar.
Is there any other new board members here that want to introduce themselves? We have Sabrina Hilp, Hilpwood, Stephanie Wavas. None of the other ones are here? Williams Claxbold.
Yes, this is William Claxbold. It's my second go around. I've been on the board for a few years. Just keep up the board. I guess I wasn't renewed in 2009, 2020. Now I'm back on.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome back.
Okay, thank you.
Any other new board members?
Okay, we also pay attention to the Alice. Because first of all, I just want to say as a personal privilege, I don't know what I was being accused of. I wasn't going for people's personal information. I said a bio, like people are doing now. Who are people? Not who are they because we want to check them out. We want to get to know each other. This is very nice to do what we just did, to hear who the people are. But I'm also concerned when I look at the list and I see that there's no Marty Needleman after 30 or 40 years being on the community board. And we didn't even say goodbye. I mean, this is something that I'm talking about, Del. Just that we have better ways to talk to people. That's all.
Okay, Jan, you want to go on your mo, go, go ahead with your motion. We get a second and then we take a vote. Is there a second on Jan's vote to write a letter?
Second, William Vega.
Okay, roll call vote, please, Jerry.
Can someone repeat the motion, please?
Jan, repeat the motion. Jan, wakey, wakey.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I made a motion, if I'm not jumped on again, to send a letter to the Borough President's office to clarify the issues around people being appointed to the board. And we particularly.
You're muted, Jan.
We keep, I keep turning it on and then somebody's turning it off. So we wanted to deal with the fact that do people have to, like, for example, the people said they are going down to Borough Hall to sign in, but we don't know who goes down for those things. We don't know. Are we having people being appointed, being brought up before the community board to make their, their pledge to the state and city of New York to be on this community board? Or is that being dropped? Is that just something that will happen at Borough Hall? We want to clarify the protocol of how people are appointed to the board and how we know about it. I guess that's as far as we are agreeing at this point.
Okay, roll call vote, please, Jerry.
It's not a very exciting protocol anymore.
Gina Argento.
I abstain.
Bogdan Bakarowski. Lisa Bamanthi. Gina Barros.
Yes.
Eric Brizades.
Abstain.
Thomas Burrows.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro.
Yes.
Frank Carbone. Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Churicella. Teresa Cinciatto. Stephanie Cuevas. Ronan Dally. Giovanni Damato.
Abstain.
Aaron Drinkwater. Arthur Dibonowski. Lloyd Feng.
Yes.
Julie Amanda Foster.
Yes.
Crystal Garcia.
Yes.
Joe Goldstein. Joe Gross.
Abstain.
David Heimlich. I know you have audio problems. You could give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down or a lateral for a neutral. Thumbs up is a yes. Thank you, sir. Sabrina Help. Katie, Danny Horowitz.
No.
Sonia Iglesias.
Ah, yes.
Moisha Indig. Robert Jeffrey. Lozenna Kaminsky.
Abstain.
Cory Canton.
Abstain.
Paul Kelterborn.
Abstain.
William Claxbold.
No.
Yo Landau. Marie Lianza.
Yes.
Yo Low. Trina McKeva. Adam Myers.
Yes.
Sante Michelli.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. Rabbi Needleman. Karen Nieves. Mary Odomerak.
Yes.
Janice Peterson.
Yes.
Bella Sable.
It's not working. I know you're, you know.
Isaac Sulfur. Del Teague.
Abstain.
William Vega.
Yes.
Maria Vietta.
Abstain.
Simon Weiser.
No.
I don't know if you hear me. Yes.
So noted, Mr. Bakarowski.
Frank Carbone, yes. Frank Carbone, yes.
You heard your friend.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry.
Arka Dibonowski, yes. I'm sorry.
On the yes, three no, nine abstention motion carries.
Thank you, Jerry. Now I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Make the motion. We approve the minutes. Julia Foster.
I second.
Joe Gross.
Julia and Gross, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Against? Abstentions? Motion carry. Okay, once again, welcome to all the board, uh, new board members. And we look forward to working with every, each and every one of you. Now we will have the public session. Joanna, can you call the names? And we have a long list of people that want to speak under the public session. Therefore, tonight you will only get one minute to speak.
Our speaker is Nick Palado. Nick Palado. They're not answering the call. The next one is Michael Carden. Michael Carden is not answering the call. The following speaker is Michael Deveres. Michael?
Yeah, do you hear?
Yes. Yes.
I'm having a technical issue. Is there any way someone else can go and I can go in five minutes?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
All right, hello. I'd like to thank everyone for your time. As a member of Manhattan Community Board Six, I know how long these meetings can sometimes be, so I would try to make it short. As a union representative who represents thousands of theatrical truck drivers, location department workers, and casting directors, I know how hard it can be for different groups of people to sometimes agree on a solution. In my experience, one of the biggest assets in making a decision is to have all sides voice their suggestions and concerns. And that is what I am here this evening, to voice my concerns with the proposed Monitor Street Bike Lane. For the last 17 years I have lived in New York City. During those 17 years, I have worked for theatrical teams through local 817, where I've driven tractor trailers, box trucks, vans, SUVs, and cars all over the five boroughs. At home in the East Village, my preferred methods of transportation are walking, taking the subway, or riding my bicycle. In 2008, while traveling south down Second Avenue, I was cut off by a taxi, causing me to flip over my bike, breaking my elbow. The scar from my surgery reminds me every day how important it is that protected bike lanes. Protected bike lanes protect not only the cyclist, but the motorized vehicle driver as well. I do not know one person, especially those I represent, who wants to be responsible for hurting or killing someone while driving, whether it's their fault or not. A protected bike lane on the right street could be the best tool to protect the driver and the cyclist. And in my opinion, Monitor Street is not the best street. One of the biggest problems I see is that there are 17 businesses on this street with active driveways. It would be almost impossible to have protected bike lanes with larger vehicles pulling in and out of those driveways, conducting their business. There are also larger parking lots where cars are constantly pulling in and out all day as well. There are other streets in this neighborhood such as Homewood Street that have significantly less businesses and truck traffic that may be better option for this bike lane. My experience with this bike lane, as well as McGinnis Boulevard Bike Lane, has made me realize that the business, the businesses who would most be affected are usually the last people to know, often finding out without being able to voice their concerns. With McGinnis Boulevard being a truck route, I would have thought the DOT would have brought teams to join Council 16, which represents over 120,000 workers, mostly drivers. Hello?
Please summarize. You only have one minute.
Okay. A one minute left or just one minute and that's it?
One minute total.
Okay, I'll wrap it up, all right?
Yes.
Unfortunately, they're not, and I also walked in McGinnis Boulevard speaking with most small businesses owners and found that they had no clue of the DOT's possible plans for McGinnis Boulevard. I was very appreciative to Councilman Wrestler and his staff for setting up a Zoom with some of these business owners and the DOT when I brought it to his attention. If one of my members who resides in the neighborhood wouldn't have told me, no one would have known. In closing, I would love to see more outreach to the residences and businesses that would most be affected by this and other bike lanes in the area. If there is a community hearing flyer, should we post it and hand it out on the post streets to residences and businesses weeks in advance to those who would affect most? So those who affect most can have a voice. Thank you again for your time.
You're welcome. Remember, everyone, you got one minute.
The next speaker is Sol Kayak. Sol Kayak. They're not answering the call. The following speaker is Robert Knapp. Robert, you unmuted?
Yes, I'm on now. Thank you. Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Bob Knapp and I'm a member of Monastree Block Association between Norman and Nassau Avenues. I'm speaking to you tonight on three issues which are connected. How much can our Greenpoint residents handle? With a few short minutes allowed, I would like to address the Transportation Committee. First, I would briefly like to mention the fact that there have been 20 film shoots from February 11th to May 16th on all the same blocks. Nassau, Norman, Driggs, and Avenues, Monitor, North Henry, Russell, and Humboldt Streets. Days and weeks on end of the same blocks at the same time. Unless you live in the area or witness it firsthand, you can't imagine the hardships and parking issues it causes. Secondly, I'd like to address the no-through truck traffic and newly proposed bike lane from Monastree. What are people thinking? Over 35 years ago, Mr. Joe Lantolet at our side, we successfully fought for Monastree to be an no-through truck traffic block from Norman Avenue to Driggs Avenue. Two sides are installed on each intersection obey. Presently, with the traffic on the Costco Bridge and the BQE, through GPS technology, truck drivers and passenger vehicles learned the shortcut. They get off the BQE, come Greenpoint Avenue and go left onto Monastree, down to Mika and back on the BQE. Trucks are not obeying the sign. I say sign because there is no, no one-through truck traffic sign in each intersection. The other sides were seriously disappeared for two years. I've been fighting with DOT to replace the signs. You know that DOT finally admitted that they implemented a new policy, a sign reduction program? The reasoning is that if there are too many signs in one area, they are not obeyed. So they themselves cut and removed one sign from each intersection. You imagine that? So now we only have one sign on the East Lee corner of each intersection. For two years I've. For two years, I've been, uh, sending pictures to the politicians showing the trucks barreling down Monitor Street. The no-through truck traffic block. Especially with our PS one-ten children crossing the intersection.
Please summarize.
Still no action has been taken. Lastly, the problem has, goes hand in hand with the newly proposed bike lane for Monitor Street. A few years ago, Monitor Street was a nice quiet block. Now it's a throughway for trucks and speeders. Try crossing in the AM or PM rush hours. With all this activity on Monitor Street, especially from Greenpoint to Mika Avenue, it is suicidal to consider installing a bike lane in this area. In closing, please do not take my word for it. Physically, visit our blocks and see for yourself. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is Kathy Price. Kathy, you're unmuted.
Kathy, are you there?
I don't, I no longer see her. Um. The next speaker is Randy Pierce. Randy?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, everybody. Randy Pierce, President of the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce. It's good to be with you here tonight. Uh, I was Community Board Chair for seven years, Community Board Seven. I, I respect and appreciate your hard work and your volunteerism. Uh, yeah, I'm going to talk about the bike lane as well. Uh, you know, look, Lincoln said something interesting about protecting uh, our industrial business zones, right? So if we're going to protect our industrial business zones long term, because we believe in the jobs and the opportunities that it creates for our residents, then it has to extend uh, to DOT as well. And, you know, I, I always thought DOT should have a Hippocratic oath of their own. First, do no harm. Uh, but clearly, this is not the right place to have a bike lane. Uh, not with seventeen businesses, not with, uh, you know, businesses that have been so good to the community like Broadway Stages uh, and give back to the community that have, uh, sort of active shoots. Uh, you know, these are the things that make your community special. These are the things that contribute to the economy of the borough. Uh, and I think we're not against bike lanes, so I don't want you all to think we're against bike lanes, but we have to be reasonable uh, about where they're placed. We have to make them safe for the bicyclists as well as everyone else that uses the thoroughfare. Uh, and most importantly, if we truly do care about, uh, the businesses and the jobs that create, uh, that are created in our, in our neighborhoods and our communities, then we have to protect our industrial business zones. So, you know, listen, on behalf of the sixty-two thousand businesses in Brooklyn, uh, you know, we, uh, we are, are coming out really to say to all of you, uh, to encourage DOT, uh, to reconsider, you know, where this bike lane is being placed and really support the character, uh, of the, the industrial character of the community. So, thanks so much. Appreciate your time. It's good to see everybody, and I hope you're all well.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Tony Argento. Tony Argento. They're not answering the call. The next speaker is Chris, uh, Monica Hollowitz.
Hello?
Hello? You're unmuted? Uh, yes, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, I'm with Tony, so can you speak first?
I want to just speak. Uh, I am a resident of Greenpoint, Brooklyn. I am a homeowner in Greenpoint, Brooklyn. My business is in Greenpoint since nineteen ninety-six, twenty-six years. It's Broadway Stages. More than fifteen hundred union people work in our facility. Right? It is, it is Monitor Street and Kingsland are two major thoroughfare truck routes with hundreds of trucks a day passing these streets, including tractor trailers, garbage trucks, tractor trailer fuel trucks, um, sanitation trucks, rental trucks. And this, with the seventeen businesses in both, uh, Kingsland and, and Monitor, DOT has no, has not reached out to any of these businesses to get their opinion about these bike lanes. We are not against bike lanes, but we want safe bike lanes, uh, protected bike lanes. We have some ideas, but we have no outreach from DOT. I feel DOT is not doing their jobs at all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Christine Hollowitz. Christine?
Hello, I am here. Hello, can you hear me? So my name is Christine Hollowitz. I am a long, um, I'm a resident in this community for most of my life. I have been fighting for the environment, um, throughout this whole time, as well as the open space. Um, when we did the rezoning, we always talked about doing, making sure that the business industrial area stays still and that there was no, there's not going to be any changes to it. Bringing bike lanes into a heavy industrial area, it's really very, uh, it's very dangerous. You, there was never going to be a, a time where there will be no accidents. You have trucks coming from the businesses. There is going to be additional trucks that are going to be driving every day from waste management to the sewage treatment plant when the, um, National Grid will start operating the gas cleaning plant. They, this is going to be like maybe twenty, maybe thirty, or fifty trucks a day going back and forth on those streets. It is impossible to have, uh, safe bike lanes. The other thing that I would like to ask, I have never seen any kind of studies done by the Department of Transportation regarding this. I mean, usually, we have consultants who go out there and measure the amount of trucks, cars, and bikes, and then they come back to the community board and they tell them what is the impact, what is the environmental impact, what is the social, whatever else. I haven't seen any of that. I mean, are we just planning this off the cuff? Or is this really going to be a decent plan? Not some of these plans that we've done before, and then all of a sudden, we found out that that's not a good thing because, hey, let's do it. We did, we redesigned McGinnis Boulevard. Now, it couldn't take, it cannot take enough of traffic. Now, we're going to design it one way, each way. And no one thinks of the environment. All of those cars who are going to be just standing still are going into the neighborhood of Greenpoint. So then, so that the waterfront could be nice and safe, and the rest of it could have all the traffic, all the sickness, and everything else going on to us, because why not? We need bike lanes on the major thoroughfares for trucks. I mean, come on. Have some mercy on the people, on the bicyclists, as well as all of the people who are driving these trucks. They can't see a bike. I mean, is anybody thinking of this? So let's, why don't you just hire some kind of, I mean, the DOT should hire a consultant, so he can look at the street and see if it's even possible. You can't just make these decisions off the cuff. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, uh.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think Monica Hollowitz, who is with Tony Argento, she was called, but Tony spoke when he was recognized, and I think Monica got skipped.
Monica just spoke.
No, that, that was, that was Christine Hollowitz. I think Monica was there with Tony, and she gets, yeah.
I don't know. I heard her say, like, she was, she was there, she was with Tony, and Tony spoke, and she didn't come back on. So I don't know. Okay, uh, it's eight o'clock. Um, and it's time for our elections. So, um, we'll do the, uh, attendance committee first. We have, um, we have Niedeman, we have Eric, Eric Brusitis, and we have Iris Cabrera. Okay, Jerry. Jerry, want to do the roll call for the votes? Jerry, are you having tech- technical difficulty? Joanna.
Okay, so when you hear your name, give your choice of your selected vote for each position.
Well, each candidate.
Gina Argento. The chairperson.
No, we're doing the tenants first, Jerry.
Our tenants first?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're, we're going to do the, uh, regular executive board if you, uh, if you don't have your paperwork.
Well, it's easier for me with the scratch sheet that we have prepared to go down the line for each position.
Okay, go ahead.
So we're going to do each, we're going to do each position, ask each board member how they vote. So Gina Argento, are you present? Bogdan Bakarowski?
Yes.
I'm going to ask you how you vote for each position, for chairperson.
For chairperson, I would like to vote yes. And for the, uh.
Now, who, who are you voting for, Mr. Bakarowski?
Me, me, I would like to vote for Dallas Fuller, please.
Okay, for first vice?
Mr. Visor.
Thank you. Second vice?
That is, uh, whoever is current, that's Gina.
Jenny, can I make a suggestion? Sorry, Simon, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Can you ask the board members that if they have no change, they vote to full slate?
I can't do that. Thank you for your suggestion. I can't do that. I have to record how each member votes.
So can you please tell all the board members?
That's why each member got a listing of the people in the mail, Simon.
Okay, just say the names, at least I know who they're voting for.
Okay, what, um, go ahead, Jerry.
Mr. Bakarowski. For second, for second vice chairperson.
Mr. Weiser. That is Gina.
Del Teague is the current second vice chairperson. The third vice chairperson.
Whoever is current, I vote yes.
I can't accept that. You have to give the person's name.
Gina.
For financial secretary.
That is Ms. Vera.
For recording secretary.
That's Sonia.
For member at large.
Frank Caponegro.
You can pick one, two, three, or none of the members of the attendance committee.
The, uh, attendance committee, that is Rabbi Nivel.
Okay.
And Sonia Iglesias, and, uh, Iris, and Ms. Iris.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Gina, was that you on the phone?
Yes, it was. I apologize.
All right, so position of chairperson, first vice, second vice, third vice, financial secretary.
Do it right now. Chairperson Denise Fuller, first vice chairperson, Simon Weiser, second vice chairperson, Del Teague, third vice chairperson, Gina Barrows, financial secretary Maria Rivera, recording secretary Sonia Iglesias, and at large Philip Caponegro.
Okay.
And for the attendance committee, the three, uh, people that were, that were spoken about earlier, Rabbi Niedeman, Sonia Iglesias, and, and Iris.
Sonia is not a candidate.
Oh, she wasn't. I apologize. I thought she was. Sorry.
The three candidates, the three people nominated this evening were Iris Cabrera, Rabbi Niedeman, and, uh, Eric Brusitis. You can vote for one, two, three, or none.
I'll vote for all three.
Thank you. Lisa Bamonte?
I'm here, Jerry.
Okay.
Uh, yes.
For chairperson?
Uh, chairperson Fuller.
Okay, first vice?
Simon Weiser.
Okay.
Del Teague.
Okay.
Gina Barrows.
Okay.
Uh, Maria Rivera.
Thank you.
Uh, Sonia.
Thank you.
Uh, Philip.
At large?
Philip Caponegro.
Okay.
And, uh, attendance committee, right? We're on that.
Yes.
Uh, all three, Niedeman, Eric, and Iris.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Gina Barrows?
Hi. Um, chairperson, Dallas Fuller. Uh, first chairperson, Simon Weiser, second chairperson, Del Teague.
Right.
Uh, Maria, um.
Third vice?
Third vice Gina Barrows.
Okay.
Um, uh, Maria Vieira.
Financial secretary, yes.
Secretary, um, secretary, um, Sonia Iglesias, and member at large, Phil Caponegro.
Okay.
And for the attendance committee, Rabbi Niedeman, Eric Brusitis, and Iris Cabrera.
Thank you. Eric Brusitis, how do you vote?
Uh, chairperson, Dallas Fuller, first vice, Simon Weiser, second vice, Del Teague, third vice Gina Barrows, financial secretary Maria Vieira, recording secretary Sonia Iglesias, member at large, Phil Caponegro, attendance, Rabbi Niedeman, myself, and, uh, Iris Cabrera.
Thank you. Tom Burrows, how do you vote?
For chairperson, Dallas Fuller. For first vice chairperson, Simon Weiser.
Yes.
Second vice chair, Del Teague.
Yes.
Vice chair, Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Financial secretary Maria Vieira.
Thank you.
Recording secretary Sonia Iglesias.
Okay.
Member at large, Phil Caponegro.
Okay.
And for the attendance committee, Rabbi Niedeman, Eric Brusitis, and Iris Cabrera could be fully diverse and representative attendance committee.
Thank you. Iris Cabrera, how do you vote?
Uh, for chairperson, Delia, for first vice chair, Simon, for second one, Del Teague.
Right.
For third, Gina, uh, Maria, uh, Sonia.
Right.
Member at large, uh, Caponegro.
Right.
Attendance, uh, all the three. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Phil Caponegro, how do you vote?
Okay, Jerry, uh, Dallas for chair.
Yes.
Simon for first.
Yes.
Second. Gina for third. Maria for financial.
I didn't get second, second was.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina for third.
Yes.
Maria for financial.
Yes.
My friend Sonia for recording.
Yes.
Self, of course. And Rabbi Niedeman, Eric, and Iris.
Thank you. Frank Carbone?
Yes.
How do you vote?
We've got Fuller for chair, Weiser, Teague.
Right.
Barrows.
Yes.
Cabrera.
Yes. Yes.
Caponegro.
Yes.
Niedeman.
Yes.
Cabrera.
Yes.
And Brusitis.
Yes, thank you.
You got it.
Stephen Chesser, how do you vote?
Chairperson Fuller.
Yes.
First vice, Weiser.
Yes.
Second vice, Teague.
Yes.
Third vice, Barrows.
Yes.
And secretary Vera.
Yes.
Recording secretary Iglesias.
Yes.
Member at large, Caponegro.
Yes.
Full slate for, um, attendance.
The three members.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chiracella? Miss Sensiata? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Dally?
Yes, uh, Dallas Fuller for chairperson.
Yes.
Weiser for first vice.
Weiser for first vice.
Yes.
Teague, second vice.
Yes.
Barrows, third vice.
Yes.
Vera, financial.
Yes.
Iglesias, recording.
Yes.
Caponegro, member at large.
Yes.
And all three for attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Giovanni Damato, how do you vote?
Dallas for chair.
Yes.
Simon for first vice.
Yes.
Del for second.
Yes.
Gina for third.
Yes.
Maria for financial.
Yes.
Sonia for recording.
Yes.
Phil for member at large.
Yes.
And then the whole slate for attendance.
What is those slates? So the three members?
Rabbi, yeah, the rabbi.
Needleman and Bersitis.
Yep.
Thank you, sir. Aaron Drinkwater? Art DiBodowski? Lloyd Feng?
Yes, hi.
Hi, how do you vote, sir?
Art, okay, so I vote Fuller, Simon Weiser, Del Teague, Gina Barrows, Maria Vieira, Sonia Iglesias, Frank, and the three is Rabbi, Iris, and Eric.
Thank you. Julia Amanda Foster?
It'd be me. Chairman, Dallas Fuller, Simon Weiser for first chair, second chair, Del Teague, third vice chair Gina Barrows, financial secretary Maria Vieira, recording secretary, hi Sonia, member at large, Philip Cabron. Did I say that right? Might have said it wrong.
Caponegro.
Caponegro, thank you. Attendance committee, Eric Bersitis, Iris Cabrera, and Rabbi Needleman.
Thank you. Chair Fuller, how do you vote?
Dallas Fuller for chair, Simon Weiser for first vice chair, Del Teague for second vice chair, Gina Barrows for third vice chair, Maria Vieira, financial secretary, Sonia Iglesias, recording secretary, Bill Caponegro, a member at large, attendance committee, Rabbi Needleman, Eric Bersitis, and Iris Cabrera.
Thank you. Crystal Garcia?
Yes, for chairperson, Fuller.
Yes.
First vice, Weiser, second vice, Teague, third vice, Barrows, financial secretary Maria Vieira, recording secretary Iglesias, member at large, Caponegro, and for the attendance committee, all three members.
Thank you. Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross?
Yes.
Joel Goldstein?
Yes.
How do you vote, Mr. Goldstein?
Lee Fuller for first chair.
Okay, I have to put them, I have to vote.
Simon Weiser for second, Del Teague, third.
Yes.
Gina Barrows, third, financial, Maria, recording Sonia Iglesias, member at large, Philip Caponegro, and attendance committee, Rabbi Needleman, Iris, and Eric.
Thank you. Joel Gross, how do you vote?
You hear me?
Yes.
Fuller, visor, Del Teague, Maria, Sonia, Philip, for attendance committee, Rabbi, Eric, and Iris.
Thank you. David Heimlich?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good. Dallas Fuller for first, Simon Weiser second vice chair, Del Teague third vice chair, Gina Barrows, financial secretary Maria Vieira, Sonia Iglesias, and large, and Philip Caponegro for member at large.
Yes.
And the three, the three members for a large.
Okay. Sabrina Help? Katie Denny Horwitz?
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would say, sorry pulling it up, Dallas Fuller, Simon Weiser, Del Teague, Gina Barrows, Maria Vieira, Sonia Iglesias, Phil Caponegro, and then the three for attendance.
Thank you. Sonia Iglesia.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
For chairperson, Dallas Fuller.
Yes.
For first vice chair, Mr. Simon Weiser, for second vice chair, Del Teague, for third chair Gina Barrows, for financial secretary Maria Vieira, for recording secretary Sonia Iglesias, for member at large, Mr. Phil Caponegro, and for the attendance committee, Iris Cabrera, Cabrera, Rabbi Needleman, and Eric Bersitis.
Great, thank you. Moisa Indig? Ronald Jeffrey? Bosana Kaminski?
Yes, Jerry, for chair, Dallas Fuller, first chair, Simon Weiser, second, Del Teague, third Gina Barrows, financial secretary Maria Vieira, recording Sonia Iglesias, member at large, Philip Caponegro, and Rabbi Needleman, Eric, and Iris.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Corey Canton?
Yes, chairperson, Delise, first vice, Weiser, second vice, Teague, third vice, Barrows, financial, Maria, recording, Iglesias, member at large, Caponegro, and the three for attendance.
Thank you. Paul Kelteborn?
For chair, Fuller, first vice, Simon Weiser, second vice, Del Teague, third Gina Barrows, financial secretary Maria Vieira, recording secretary Iglesias, member at large, Phil Caponegro, and then all three, Eric, Iris, and Rabbi Needleman for attendance.
Thank you. William Klagsbold?
Chair Fuller, first vice, Weiser, Del Teague, Gina Barrows, financial Maria Vieira, recording, Iglesia, member at large, Caponegro, and Rabbi Needleman, Iris Cabrera, and Eric Bersitis.
Thank you. Yoel Landau? Marie Lianza? Can't hear you, Marie.
I'm sorry, I don't have the list in front of me, but I'll have Fuller, for chair, Simon, Del.
Yes. Yes.
Sonia.
Yes.
Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
And one, two, or three members of the attendance committee.
Well, the, the current nominees are Cabrera, Rabbi Needleman, and Eric Bersitis.
Okay, those three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yolo? Trina McKeva? Adam Myers?
Yeah, I'll vote for Fuller, Weiser, Teague, Barrows, Vera, Iglesias, Caponegro, and the other three for attendance committee.
Okay, thank you. Sante Michelley?
So I was listing the agenda, Fuller, Weiser, Teague, Barrows, Vera, Iglesias, Caponegro, and confirming the three members of the attendance committee.
Cabrera, Rabbi Needleman, and Bersitis?
Yes.
Thank you. Obi Moskowitz? Rabbi Needleman? Karen Nieves? Mario Dahmerk?
Okay, I will go in the, in the order you have, Dallas, Simon, Del, Gina, Maria, Sonia, Phil, and then attendance is Rabbi, Eric, and Iris.
Thank you. Janice Pearson?
I'm here. Fuller, Weiser, Del, Gina, and then Vera for financial, recording secretary Sonia, Phil, Phil for at large, and the three attendance people, Eric, Needleman, and Iris.
Thank you. Bella Sable?
She's there.
Michael? Hello?
Yes, I can hear you, Bella.
Okay, Fuller.
Yes.
Weiser.
Yes.
Del Teague.
Yes.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Maria Vieira.
Yes.
Frank. Caponegro.
You, you skipped one, recording secretary?
What's the name? Sonia?
Yes.
Yes, Sonia.
Okay, thank you. And then the three, three, one, two, three, or none of the attendance committee?
Yes, Rabbi Needleman, Bersitis, and Cabrera.
Oh, it didn't work again.
So you voted for all three?
Yes.
Thank you. Isaac Soffer? Del Teague?
Yes, yes, sorry. Okay, so for chair, Dallas Fuller, first vice, Simon Weiser, second, Del Teague, third vice Gina Barrows, financial secretary Maria Vieira, recording secretary Sonia Iglesias, member at large, Philip Caponegro, and for attendance, Eric Bersitis, Iris Cabrera, and Rabbi Needleman.
Thank you, and thank everyone for their patience. Three more to go. Mr. Vega?
Yes, Dallas, Simon.
Yes.
Gina, Maria, Sonia, Philip, and all three.
Three members of the attendance committee.
Correct.
Maria Vieira?
Chair, Dallas Fuller, Simon Weiser, Del Teague, Gina Barrows, Maria Vieira, Sonia Iglesias, Bill Caponegro, Iris Cabrera, Rabbi Needleman, and Eric Bersitis.
Thank you. Last but not least, Mr. Weiser.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, honorable, Dallas Fuller for chair, first vice chair, myself, Simon Weiser, second vice chair, Del Teague, third vice chair Gina Barrows, financial secretary Maria Vieira, recording secretary Sonia Iglesia, and Philip Caponegro, member at large, Rabbi Needleman, Eric Bersitis, and Iris Cabrera for committee.
Okay, there were thirty-five votes cast. Thirty-five members voted for Dallas Fuller, thirty-five, for Simon Weiser, thirty-five, for Del Teague, thirty-five, for Gina Barrows, thirty-five, for Maria Vieira, thirty-five, for, for recording secretary Sonia Iglesia, thirty-five, for Phil Caponegro, member at large, thirty-five, for Iris Cabrera, thirty-five, for Rabbi Needleman, thirty-five, and for Mr. Bersitis, thirty-four. The reason why we have to call the vote, just for those information purposes for the new members, is that all of the votes of the board, every member's vote has to be recorded and placed in the minutes. So the tally for this ballot and how you voted will appear in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, everybody, for your vote. I look forward to working with everybody, and I look forward to working with my team again. We make a very good team, and I thank everybody for all the cooperation and working with us for the oddest time. And I look forward to the next year, whatever it may bring. Okay, we're going to go back into our public session.
I'm chair.
Yes?
Sarah Bersitis. During the previous session, Saul Kojic, he was called, but he was, his system booted him out of the meeting. He's, if we could circle back and call him again for his one minute, that would be great.
Who?
Saul Kojic.
Okay, Joanna, call him.
Saul, you're unmuted.
Hello there, I'm actually a she.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I am Saul. I am the founder of an international artist community in Greenpoint, on Green Street, and all the residents onboard our platform are avid bikers. So we, we feel very strongly about bike initiatives in, in Greenpoint. Personally, I'm, I'm on Kingsland, and I have to, basically, I'm trying to be quick. I feel that the proposed bike lane on Kingston Avenue, or a monitor, is gonna be, it's gonna be, do the opposite of what it's, it's intended, because bike lanes are supposed to make us feel safer. But on Kingston Avenue, I, whenever I have to go down that street, I end up going on the sidewalk, because I feel so at risk in the, by, by the curb, because since this is a through street, the trucks come flying at, at me from, with no, with no consideration, consideration for bikers. So I feel like the, a much better proposal, from the perspective of myself and the many bikers in my community, would be to put the bike lanes on the sidewalk that is not in much use at all on the northern or the eastern side of Kingsland. Because it's, I think it's great that, that there are initiatives taken for more bike lanes in our neighborhoods, but we want them to make us feel safer as opposed to exposing us to more risk.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jim Angel. Jim Angel. They're not answering the call. The following speaker is Monica Desa. Monica Desa. They're answering the call. The next speaker is Eric Palatnick. Eric, you're muted. Oh, that's great. Thank you all so much for your time this evening and for being so patient with everybody who's speaking. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
That's great, and thank you, Chair, very much. You're a very patient chair. My name is Eric Palatnick, and I am an attorney representing Gina Argento and Tony Argento on Broadway Stages, and I wanted to speak, not in opposition to bicycle lanes, but in opposition to the bicycle lane that is proposed on Monitor Street, and to urge your board, even though DOT is not asking for any recommendation from you, we are urging you this evening to make your own, take it upon yourselves, and make a voluntary recommendation to the Department of Transportation, to ask them to reconsider placing the bike lane that's proposed on Monitor Street for another street, as the last speaker just spoke to. Kingsland has an eighteen-foot sidewalk that bicycle riders are using right now, every single day, as a protected path to ride, to ride on. There are other alternatives other than Monitor Street, and as was mentioned by many other speakers earlier, we don't believe the Department of Transportation has done studies on any of them. We have. Gina has commissioned her own, and you'd be surprised to find out that the Monitor Street is rarely, if ever, used as a bicycle path by bicyclists. This is despite the fact that direct testimony of DOT at the last meeting where you were all at, where they said to the Transportation Committee, people are already using Monitor Street. That is not the case, and in fact, more people are actually already using Kingsland. Now, Broadway Stages is a big community supporter. They're all in favor of bicycle lanes. They have thousands of people that work at their facilities. They want them to get there. They've even supported the bicycle lane that's on the north side of Greenpoint Avenue. Tony and Gina were involved in that. They're anxious to see you take route. Where the problem is, is where it goes south of Greenpoint Avenue. That stretch between Greenpoint and Norman is seventeen hundred feet long. That is four hundred feet longer than a racetrack. The National Hot Rod Association requires a drag strip to be thirteen hundred feet. The seventeen hundred foot length of that block lets people rip up to fifty miles an hour down a block that has less than thirty feet width, that has cars parked on an angle, and has tractor trailers on each side that are not through tractor trailers, like the last community person spoke to that he didn't want to see, but rather they're parked there to service Broadway Stages that's located in an industrial business zone. They're not in a residential area. So I'm going to wrap up, because I know you're busy. I think you're getting the gist. We think Department of Transportation is pushing this upon you too fast, too quick, and without proper thought. We're urging you to proactively tell them tonight, make a motion, and ask them to spend the time to study things, and delay any putting down of any markers on any roadway on Monitor Street until a study has been done and it's had the time to be vetted. Thank you all so much for considering us and for listening to all the speakers this evening.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Ian.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
We had requested the opportunity to show our screen. I don't know if that's still possible?
You only got one minute.
Okay, I'll just go ahead with our visual presentation. My name is Ian Rasmussen. I am the principal of Urban Cardographics, which is an urban planning consultancy based here in New York, and I'm here on behalf of our client, Broadway Stages, to urge the board to ask DOT to reconsider putting the bike lane... to urge the board to ask DOT to reconsider putting the bike lane onto the east side of Kingsland Avenue. I actually didn't even realize I'd have the benefit of the previous testimony from cyclists in the community that are already telling you that that's what's going on. The east side of Kingsland Avenue is a quarter of a mile with an eighteen-foot wide sidewalk. It has no pedestrian destinations along it. Cyclists are already riding on that sidewalk because it is a direct route for them that is protected from the truck traffic. With the eighteen feet, you should easily be able to fit a two-way protected bike lane and even reserve another five or eight feet for whatever pedestrian traffic is going to remain. Based on the comments we heard at the last Transportation Committee meeting, our sense is that DOT is pursuing the conventional bike lane option because doing a protected bike lane is more difficult. It involves their capital projects team, and it basically forces them to slow down. And instead, doing the conventional bike lane is something that they can do more quickly without having to jump through any procedural hoops or get anybody's approval. And so we're urging you to select a more safe option, not one that is just expedient. And even if conventional bike lanes are the only solution that we can find, there are other streets to put them on. Specifically, your last Transportation meeting, we discussed Humboldt Street. It has a number of intersections with stop signs, and therefore has much slower moving traffic. Additionally, there's North Henry Street, also a southbound one-way street that has a lot less truck traffic. And just to sum up, our view here is, I don't think we're either opposed to biking, nor do I think our suggestion for a protected two-way bikeway on Kingsland Avenue is inconsistent at all with the goal of building out the cycling network. But if we are serious about creating safe streets for biking, it is every bit as important to identify which streets we should not be routing the cyclists down as it is to figure out which ones we should direct them to. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Next speaker, John.
Hello, the next speaker is Adam. Sorry. Adam? Adam Rothkrug. They're not answering the call.
Okay.
Hello? Hello?
Yes?
Yes.
Hi, it's Adam Rothkrug. I was just unmuted. Everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you for your time. I'm here representing Broadway Stages. I won't reiterate all of the safety concerns that have been mentioned. I think those of you in the community are obviously aware, or you can go visit the block to see that it's not appropriate for a bike lane. I would like to note, though, speak to DOT's failure to properly communicate and notify both the Community Board and elected officials and the surrounding area. In this regard, we would note that there is actually legislation pending in the City Council that would provide for a sixty-day notice to the Community Board for additional notices and progress reports in connection with proposed bike lanes. And this law was proposed earlier this year for exactly, to exactly avoid the type of situation that's occurred here with the DOT leaving the impression that they're just plowing through without really giving the community adequate input. So we do think that, in a gesture of good faith, that even though this new law has not been passed, that it would have been proper for DOT to follow these new standards that we hope will be enacted, and again, were the result of other city, community boards and council people being unhappy with the way that DOT proceeded with the institution of bike lanes. As has been noted, Broadway Stages was not consulted, nor were any of the other seventeen, sixteen or seventeen businesses on Monitor Street, all of which have active driveways and roadways. So there are obvious safety concerns, but the fact that DOT is moving this forward without following what we hope will be legally required notice requirements in the future is as disappointing as the proposal itself. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Todd Dell. Todd Dell. They're not answering the call. The following speaker is Jay Goldstein. Jay, you're muted.
Good evening, how are you, everybody? My name is Jay Goldstein. I'm a land use attorney. I'm here tonight in opposition, or not opposition, but to request that the board and DOT find an alternative route for the proposed bike lane. I spend my days advising clients on economic development and land use in the city and the city's policies. The city zoned this area where the bike route is proposed as an industrial business zone and a manufacturing district. The city called this a safe haven for manufacturing and industrial uses, and they actually called it in their North Brooklyn Industrial Innovation Plan, the core industrial area of Brooklyn. The IBZ and the zoning, the manufacturing zoning, were intended to protect these commercial and manufacturing uses. DOT routinely protects the uses and separates the uses from residential uses by creating dedicated truck routes or dedicated bike routes that are not to commingle. The reason being, by commingling the bike lanes into this industrial area, as you heard many speakers before me, will create an unsafe environment for the bicyclists and will create liability and dangerous conditions for the businesses that are located in this area. DOT should rather identify an alternative block that is more suitable. As has been mentioned, there are other alternatives within the area that can be used, and there are other blocks on this strip, in this area, that the bicyclists in the community have already suggested may be better suited for this need. So therefore, I'd like to just reiterate that, while the bike lane is a great idea, locating it on this street is a terrible idea. And this street will just, by introducing a bike lane, you'll just be introducing pedestrian traffic onto this commercial manufacturing street as opposed to trying to keep them separated, to keep them safe, and everyone moving along smoothly. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Brian Pavford. Brian, you're muted.
Hi, thank you very much, guys. I'm both a cyclist as well as a worker in the film community, and I'm frequently down at Broadway Stages. And I have to say that, as a cyclist, as a film worker, I'm opposed to this bike lane. You know, we cross that street, we come out from behind trucks, we have an earpiece in our ears where we're in constant communication to the people inside, and it's just a dangerous scenario for people that need to work in that area. Secondly, as a cyclist, I'm against the location of this bike lane. You know, several years ago, when I lived in Bay Ridge, there's a bike path down by the water that many of you may be aware of. And someone that I knew on the periphery of my life is riding down there, and there's people there who aren't watching their kids, or the kids are just doing whatever. Kid runs out in front of them, this person skids to avoid them, hits into a pole, and winds up losing his life over an accident because they're trying to avoid someone who couldn't see that he was there. Now, that wasn't the first accident that took place. And I have to tell you that as a cyclist in the streets, pedestrians are just as dangerous and more dangerous, in fact, than vehicles. And the problem with the positioning of this bike lane is that people are going to get hurt, and many people are going to get hurt, before it rises to the attention of a fatality. And how hurt they are, and how frequent this happens, once the die is cast on something citywide and the bureaucracy said, this is a bike lane, it becomes very, very difficult at that point to say, hey, I think we made a mistake. And I think that this bike lane is a crucial, potentially devastating, catastrophic mistake that the city is about to put forth. And if we really care about our community, and we care about both the people that are working down there as well as the cyclists, I think we have to find a better place for this. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is John Strauss. John Strauss. They're not answering the call. The following speaker is Hyron Rothkrug. Hyron? They're not answering the call. The following speaker is Elise Foladere. Hello?
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Elise Foladere, and I'm from Eric Palatnik PC. We represent Broadway Stages. I'm here to urge this board to reject the bike lane proposal because attracting more cyclists to use Monitor would be unsafe, whether there is a bike lane or not. Every one of the buildings along Monitor Street between Greenpoint and Norman Avenues is occupied by active businesses. The street is bustling with activity throughout the day. There are tractor trailers, bus trucks, vans, and cars that make frequent trips, as well as a constant stream of loading and unloading. There are numerous dumpsters present, as well as angled parking to accommodate the dozens of active vehicles coming and going at any time. The block's largest property owner is Broadway Stages, one of the city's largest TV and movie production studios. Their Monitor Street studios employ about eight hundred people on this block every day with several thousand more and going each year, not to mention the hundreds of local companies they do business with, because they own and operate numerous buildings on both sides of the street. This block of Monitor Street is effectively the backlot of their studios. There are people walking in across the street all day, moving equipment such as wardrobe racks, and moving set pieces being shuttled between over a dozen sound stages. Aside from Broadway Stages, the surrounding properties employ thousands of people and contain over a thousand trucks and buses that come and go from the area every day. All this adds up to a street that cannot safely accommodate more cyclists. DOT's planners suggest that adding a bike lane to Monitor Street is necessary precisely because the street cannot safely accommodate more cyclists. The truth is that almost no bikes go down this block right now. So the bike lane would be creating this very problem it supposedly solves. According to traffic counts taken by Broadway Stages, owned traffic consultant in late 2020, there was never more than one cyclist per hour during weekdays, and just nine during the weekdays peak hour on Saturday. The proposed bike lane is not necessary to accommodate existing bicycle traffic on the block, but is instead intended to attract new bicycle traffic to the block, according to DOT, so that more people can bike to Newtown Creek Nature Walk. The fact of the matter is that it is unsafe to attract more cyclists to ride their bikes down a block that is bustling with traffic and more all day long. But that is exactly what will result if a bike lane is added. It will attract cyclists to the streets, creating the very danger it intends to solve. At best, the proposal will disrupt all the businesses on the block, at worst, someone will get hurt. Let's keep truck routes and bike routes separate. Thank you so much. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tommy Karari. Tommy, you're muted.
Hi, my name is, hello, my name is Tommy Karaya. I'm the owner of Walton Holling, which is a locally, which is a Greenpoint-based business. We've been in Greenpoint for fifteen years, been in business since 1879. We operate several hundred trucks in the New York City area. Most of our trucks are used for film, theater, and television. What we are opposing, the Kingsland Monitor Bike Lane, due to the fact that a lot of our drop-offs and pickups in that area consist of our trucks loading and offloading, and we feel that it's unsafe for both the cyclists and the truckers, as well as the pedestrians. And we hope that you guys adhere to it. We do a lot of business with Broadway Stages, and it's just, we feel it's not a safe situation when a driver who's ten feet off the ground cannot see a cyclist who is five feet on the ground. Thank you.
The next speaker is Rom Cohen.
Hello?
Yes?
Hey, thank you all. My name is Rom Cohen, representing Storage Plus, that is located on Kingsland and Greenpoint Avenue. I'm not gonna reiterate all the safety concerns, as has previously been stated, but Kingsland Avenue and Monitor Street are high-traffic areas. The easiest route to go from Greenpoint to Long Island City is right over there on that intersection. I'm stationed there, and I see so many trucks coming at high speeds, driving recklessly. It's a load-in, load-out zone. This is not a safe area to put a bike lane. We ask that effort should definitely be made for a safer route for these bike lanes, and it would be highly appreciated. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nicole Scallon. Nicole Scallon. They're not answering the call. The following speaker is Tiffany Scallon. Tiffany Scallon. They're not answering the call. The following speaker is Chris Roberti. Chris?
Hi. Yep, I'm a big fan of CB1. I've lived here for about fifteen years. Good work, everybody. I live on Morgan Ave between Driggs and Nassau, and so I'm a little, you know, I'm a biker, I'm a driver, I'm a parent of a student at 110. I agree with a lot of whatever been saying specifically about the dangerous truck traffic that's kind of blowing through our neighborhood, and the need for a bike route, a safe bike route. As a matter of fact, I own a unit, or I rent a unit at Storage Plus, and it's a nightmare to ride my bike there. So whether it's Kingsland or Monitor or both, I do think, it seems like the argument is we surrender the street because it's dangerous. Whereas I think we've surrendered so much, every walk, every day I walk to school, I see crazy drivers, and I don't feel safe. And I think whether it's on Monitor or whether it's on Kingsland, we need something, and we need something quick, because it is a ticking time bomb. Thank you all for your effort and your thoughtfulness.
Then I have speaker is Kevin Costa. Kevin Costa.
Hi, this is Kevin. Thank you all for listening today. So I came in ready to give testimony in absolute support of the DOT proposal. However, I have heard a better one, which is the Kingsland Ave proposal as brought up by the urban planner, I believe, from Broadway Stages. And at the end of the day, that actually sounds like it would be an even better solution to the issues that everyone has talked about ad nauseam. And, you know, since Broadway Stages has gone through the great lengths of organizing lawyers and planners to come out and say that the Monitor-Kingsland proposal as now is not the best proposal, and they have suggested an alternative. I think that that is one that should be mentioned in any sort of recommendation that is made to DOT from the Community Board. In addition, I know that Broadway Stages has been a really great supporter of the community, and I know that would be a really great measure of good faith if they were to work with DOT also financially to make sure that that is a proposal that can become a reality. I'm referring to the Kingsland Ave Protected Bike Lane on that giant stretch of sidewalk. And yeah, at the end of the day, we need to increase awareness of cyclists and need to recognize that it is a legitimate form of transportation. It's how I get to work every day. It's how many people in the film industry, in the IBZs as well, are getting to work, and that it is a legitimate form of transportation that needs to be addressed and made safer. And if DOT's proposal is lacking in that respect, I support any measures to make that safer or to embrace the proposal as brought forth by Broadway Stages. Again, my name's Kevin. I live in Greenpoint, and I am co-chair of Transportation Alternatives Chapter in North Brooklyn. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kevin Lachera. Kevin?
Hi, I'm here. Thank you, and thank you to the board and everybody for taking the time tonight. Yeah, I mean, I think, just reiterating what Kevin and Chris were saying, Yeah, I mean, I think, just reiterating what Kevin and Chris were saying, I would be in full support of a protected two-way lane on Kingsland that went from Greenpoint Avenue to Meeker Avenue. Monitor and Kingsland have been chosen for this proposal because they are the most direct north-south routes. What we've heard tonight about other routes being possible on Humboldt, which spits out to McGinnis, or North Henry Street, which is cut by McGulrick Park, were not chosen by DOT because they were not direct routes. You know, these are desperately needed links in our neighborhood, you know, in the bike network in our neighborhood. They would connect to the Greenpoint Avenue Bridge, to the east-west lanes that are being developed under the BQE. Bike lanes don't make streets less safe. Drivers make streets less safe. You know, and there's just no actual factual basis in saying that, you know, we hear it from the folks that are talking tonight, right? Trucks speeding down roads, trucks blowing past stop signs. You know, I mean, I would also like to have a conversation about how perhaps the trucks in this area should be operating more safely. They use Monitor as a cut-through because it's the easiest way to go. You know, I, if we want to talk about what our community is going to look like in the future, and we want the answer to be anything besides underwater, we need to be supporting projects like this. And I would stand in, I would stand in support of Broadway Stages if they were willing to help with a two-way protected bike lane from Greenpoint Avenue to Meeker. These bike lanes have received over 150 signatures of support in the last three days. I'm going to repeat that. These bike lanes have received over 150 signatures of support from the community in the last three days because of exactly what Chris is talking about. The Transportation Committee of this community board voted to approve the plan presented by DOT, and it was presented to them twice. You know, ultimately, the bikes are going to be in this industrial area whether you design for it or not. People riding their bikes to school, riding their bikes to the bridge, riding home. It's a question about whether or not we are creating some small measure of recognition. Thank you. Some small measure of recognition on that street to tell drivers that bikes have the right to safely use this street. Okay, which ultimately does make the street safer for everyone. You know, so thank you again to the board. Welcome to the new members. We're grateful to have you. And I hope that we'll get a good resolution here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Daniel Elstein. Daniel?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, first of all, thank you to the board for having me. I would also like to voice my support for the bike lanes that DOT has brought forth. I think it's kind of a no-brainer that they have recognized that this is a corridor that's desperately needed because people, for one, people use it, and not only DOT, but the city as a whole also wants more people to be able to use it regardless of whether or not they may or may not feel safe right now. They want everybody to feel safe. And that's something I am greatly in support of. And that's about it. I want to echo what Kevin, Kevin and Chris have also said, that this is desperately needed and soon. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ryan Conan. Ryan?
Hey, I'm here. Hello, CB1. You thought I was gone, but I'm proud to be here as a public person speaking to you guys, and I just want to say the sign-up for speakers is really confusing, and I would say we should look at that because it's a whole process. But I'm here to speak in favor of a two-way protected bike lane on Kingsland and all bike lanes for bikers. When I, one of the first things I did when I became a member of CB1 10 years ago was be involved in the discussion of the Greenpoint Bike Lane. And at that time, all the arguments against the Greenpoint Bike Lane were that it was too unsafe to put a bike lane there, that cyclists and truckers couldn't share the road together, and that the bike lane should actually be on a less direct route on Kingsland and Monitor. And 10 years later, we're kind of filling in this network of safety for cyclists. There's working cyclists in the IBZ, there's bike lanes on the IBZ. I think it should be our goal to not leave streets alone, but make sure every street is as safe as it can be and every network is connected. I've put up too many ghost bikes in this neighborhood for people I know. The first ghost bike I put up was for Craig Murphy, a great friend who died hit by a truck on Union. There's now a bike lane there and there hasn't been a fatality. The last bike lane I, the last ghost bike I put up was for Arilla Lawrence. She was killed by a trucker speeding down Broadway. We have to protect cyclists. Drivers get a modicum of safety. The truck drivers aren't at risk when they're driving on Monitor, but they create a lot of risk, and we need to create safety for cyclists too. And the best way would be a two-way protected lane on Kingsland. But I'll take every inch of safety I can get. And there are studies that show bike lanes, where there's bike lanes, there's less fatalities. And there's lots of studies that show that truckers and bikers can be together when their safety implements on the road. So I hope that we can all work together. And hey, guys, welcome to new members.
The next speaker is Tanya Oberoi. Tanya Oberoi? Not answering the call. The following speaker is Billy Senior. Billy Senior? Not answering the call. The following speaker is Richard Messor. Richard? Not answering the call. The next speaker is Yahii Rose.
Hi. Wait, could you, this is Rich Mazur. My mute thing was not working right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Rich Mazur, North Brooklyn Development Corporation. I'm just gonna read my letter that I wrote to the Transportation Committee. It has come to my attention that New York City DOT is implementing bicycle lanes on Monitor Street and Kingsland Avenue from Greenpoint Avenue to Meeker Avenue. While I'm a supporter of making New York City a more bicycle-friendly city, I'm not sure if this decreed implementation of new lanes is a great idea based on safety concerns. I am a lifelong resident of Greenpoint, only since 1950, and have been active on a number of issues in the community, especially safe streets and a clean environment. One of my earlier careers involved work in the traffic and transportation industry. This required attendance at various committee meetings for the Transportation Research Board in Washington DC, as well as the manual on uniform traffic control devices, which created all of the signs and whatever to make the Share the Road bicycle lanes possible. I also attended lectures from some of the most prestigious transportation engineering schools in the country. The top ones were University of Texas, Penn State and University of Maryland. Almost 25 years ago, the Share the Road concept was created to include safer and more environmentally friendly bicycle lanes across the country as part of a community-based planning initiative to create more livable, practical and environmentally friendly communities by changing traffic planning from just being vehicle-based to being more people-based and people like to ride bicycles and as such more carbon-neutral. This initiative has proven to be a huge success and has improved the quality of life across the country. However, having direct knowledge of how this should work, not every street is practical to use for bicycle lanes. My main concern here is the safety of the cyclists. When driving my car, I have often used both Kingsland and Monitor as the most direct link between the Greenpoint Avenue Bridge and the Kostchuk Bridge. It's like a wormhole between the two bridges. Truckers also use, obviously, these these connections quite often. Additionally, both streets between Norman and Avenue are mostly commercial, a lot of driveways, whatever, with a lot of in-and-out truck traffic and commercial driveways. Because of this, I would never ride my bike up and down these two streets. It's too dangerous. In fact, when I drive up these streets, I rarely ever see bikes. I would like to see the lengthy DOT transportation studies that made this seem like a practical idea. From my experience, the official way to warrant any kind of new traffic device or change in traffic patterns, including sharing the road with cyclists, would require extensive studies of traffic patterns and accident reports along the said route before recommendations can be made. I'm surprised that I'm hearing about this just as it's being implemented. I may have missed it, but when were the public hearings where both the businesses and residents could voice their concerns, ask their questions and review the extensive research done by New York City DOT? Therefore, for now, I'm totally against implementing the new bicycle lanes, bicycle lanes until all safety concerns have been addressed. I don't believe that automatically decreeing new bicycle lanes on Kingsland and Monitor is improving the quality of life in our community. In fact, it seems more like it's risking our cyclists instead. Thank you.
The next speaker is Yahii Rose. Yahii Rose? They're not answering the call. The following speaker is John Rosmus. John?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so my name is John Rosmus. I live near the Bedford area. Recently, I've been informed that there has been a designation between Bedford Avenue and that's between Manhattan and Norma Street, and it's supposed to be converted into an open street or there's some project to convert it into a plaza. These changes do not account the issues that were not addressed in 2018 when the DOT first, you know, changed this whole street over here. The major issues that we have today is that all the loading zones are now occupied by the outdoor shacks. And so they're all occupied by Goodbar mostly, and these trucks have nowhere to, you know, deliver or park or anything. As a result, all the cars and all the trucks and everything go on the Nassau side where the bus stop is. You know, this bus stop is filling up with vehicles. There's, you know, the parks are illegally double-parked over here, and this is also a shared bike lane, which it also blocks the bike lane. I don't know what's going to happen if they're going to close the street over here, and this will also take away the left-hand turn on Manhattan Avenue. You know, so ever since 2018, this project has been poorly implemented. And I, you know, the lady that lost her leg over here, I mean, I have to see all the accidents happen over here, and it just, you know, it breaks my heart over here. I do not think there, you know, ever should be a pedestrian island near the Five Leaves Restaurant. And I'm hoping that the DOT and the community board will actually listen this time to me. I spoke in 2018, but the project was implemented. It just happened, you know, in one month. And when these accidents happen, I have a new 4K security camera. And if there's going to be more victims or anything that are going to get hurt, I will be more than happy to share that footage with them and name the coalition that made this an open street. Thank you.
The next speaker is Eric Sebs. Eric, you're muted?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Eric Sebst. I am a senior project manager at The Rockefeller Group. We have recently started construction on the 16 Dupont Street site, a residential development at Dupont and West Streets. Throughout the construction process, we want to maintain an open line of communication with the community and address any issues that may arise. We send out bi-weekly construction updates from 16dupont@casir.nyc and encourage anyone to email, to just, anyone to email to just subscribe to the updates, as well as send any questions that they might have. We will also share this email address with the district manager for distribution. If you have any questions tonight, please direct them to the email address. Thank you, and again, have a great rest of your evening.
That's it, that's it for speakers?
Thank you, Joanna. I understand Rhonda from DOT is here. Rhonda, would you like to address any of these concerns that our speakers had about the Monitor Street bike lane? Rhonda?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I've been taking notes about what people were saying, but I was just here to listen. I mean, I don't, I can't respond to all these things that were said. And some things I would have to fact-check first before I could also. So I'm just here taking notes.
Well, thank you so much for coming in, Rhonda, and hearing the concerns of the community, and hopefully you'll take them back and we'll try to get something better or whatever. Thank you for coming in and listening and hearing the concerns.
You're welcome.
Okay. That concludes our committee, our public session. We have committee reports, and first of all, I have a proposal to put for the board that needs a vote. The executive board voted to promote Joanna to Assistant District Manager because we found out that we can have two, and we need a vote to promote Joanna to Assistant District Manager.
I'd make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Take a second, Jan.
Steve Chesler.
Phil and Jan? Is that Phil and Jan?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Jerry?
Gina Arjentos? Gina Arjentos?
Yes.
Bogdan Bukarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Bomonte?
Yes.
Gina Barros?
Yes.
Eric Brizades?
Yes.
Thomas Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Bill Capone Negro?
Yes.
Frank Corbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella? Teresa Cinciaata? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Daly? Dally, sorry. Giovanni Damato?
Yes.
Aaron Drinkwater? Arthur Debodowski?
Yes.
Lloyd Feng?
Yes.
Julie Amanda Foster?
Yes.
Crystal Garcia?
Yes.
Joel Goldstein?
Yes.
Joel Gross? David Heimlich?
Yes.
Sabrina Hilt? Katie Denny Horowitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias?
Yes.
Moissa Indig? Robert Jeffrey? Ozana Kaminski?
Yes.
Corey Canton?
Yes.
Paul Kelteborn?
Yes.
William Claggsbold?
Yes.
Yo Landau? Marie Lianza? Yolo? Trina McKeva?
I said yes, Jerry. Sorry, I'm out of the mood.
Thank you. Yolo? Trina McKeva? Adam Myers? Sante Michele?
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz? Rabbi Nederman? Karen Nieves? Mary O'Donoghue? Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Bella Sable?
Yes.
Isaac Soffer? Del Teague?
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Viera?
Yes.
Simon Weiser? 29, yes. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Jerry. Congratulations, Joanna. We're really pleased with the work that you stepped up and started doing in Marie's absence. I really appreciate it.
I would like to thank Joanna. This is Del Teague. I'd like to thank Joanna for what she's done.
Thank you, Joanna.
Thank you, Joanna.
Gato.
I'm Jan.
Maria, pain in the butt.
I agree. I want to thank Joanna for what she's done. Very good work.
Thank you, Joanna. Steve Chesler, you're doing amazing work. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Every time I come to the office, there's such a wonderful smile. Thank you.
I'm gonna get my thank you into. Thank you, Joanna, for
I'm gonna get my thank you into. Thank you, Joanna, for all your help and everything that you've done. Just do ya.
And I said that, this is Jan. That's what I was talking about before, having a welcoming office in place. Joanna certainly fits what I was trying to talk about.
Okay, okay, one thing. Joanna's only getting a small increase of $3,000. So when the budget, when it come up for them to get a raise this year, I hope we'll we'll do better about her, but this is all we can do at this point. And we appreciate the fact that she's taken this position with such low, low increase. You know, due to the, due to people can basically go anywhere they want to go right now at work. So I thank you, Joanna. We know it's not much, but this is the best that we can do at this time.
Thank you for sharing that, De'Alis.
You're welcome.
Thank you all.
You're welcome, Joanna. Okay. Oof, we got a long ways to go, people. SLA, Tom Burrows?
See if we can make this quick.
Committee reports.
All right, let's see if we can make this quick. All right, so we had a meeting on May 24th to consider the applications that were on the public session last month and the postponed ones. We had 24 new applications out of the 24. The committee is recommending approval to the full board. We're recommending denial on two of them. Seven of those items are postponed. And four of them, we didn't take any action because it was just notifying the board of what's called the temporary permit. So as I, like I've been doing, I've been entertaining a motion to approve all of what we recommend. The renewals, there were no concerns about any of the renewals. There were 20 renewals. So we're recommending a approval of the 20 renewals. And the previously postponed items, the first one was going to do a presentation tonight. That's been put off. Items two, three, we're recommending approval. Items four and six, recommending approval after getting the applicants, both of whom are in 88 Withers Street Building, to meet with residents of their building and Marie and Lisa. And we've pushed their closing hours back to midnight for both of those locations in that building. And the postponement for Lemons and Olives was requested by the owner of that facility. So I would entertain a motion to approve the report as written.
Sonia Iglesias, make a motion, Madam Chair, Sonia.
Tom, Phil Capone Negro?
Sonia and Phil, to accept the motion as written. Roll call vote, please.
Oh dear.
Can I?
Motion is to approve the SLA report as written. Motion was made by Sonia Iglesias, submitted by Phil Capone Negro. Gina Argento?
Yes.
Bogdan Bukarowski? Lisa Bamanthi?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Brzadis?
Yes.
Tom Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera? Phil Capone Negro?
Yes.
Was that Iris?
It was Iris and Phil.
Yes, that's me. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella? Teresa Censiata? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Daly? Giovanni D'Amato?
Yes.
Aaron Drinkwater? Arthur Dibidowski?
Obey.
I'm sorry?
Obey.
Thank you. Lloyd Feng?
Yes.
Thank you. Julia Amanda Foster? Crystal Garcia?
Yes.
Yes.
I heard two again. Was that Julia?
Julia said yes.
Thank you. Crystal voted yes.
Yes.
Joel Goldstein?
Yes.
Joel Gross? David Heimlich?
Yes.
Thank you. Sabrina Help? Katie Denny Horowitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias?
Yes.
Moisha Indig? Robert Jeffrey? Ozana Kaminsky?
Yes.
Corey Canton?
Yes.
Paul Kelteborn?
Yes.
Thank you. Williams Claggsbold?
Yes.
Thank you. Yo Landau? Marie Lianza?
Yes.
Yo Low? Trina McKeva? Adam Myers? Sante Michelli?
Good night.
Toby Moskowitz? Martin Niederman? Rabbi Niederman, I'm sorry. Rabbi Niederman? Karen Neves? Mary O'Domack? Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Yes.
Bella Sable? Mary O'Domack? Bella Sable? Isaac Soffer? Del Teague?
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Viera?
Yes.
Yes.
Simon Weiser? Twenty-six, yes, zero, no, one abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you, Jerry. We can't, we can't, we can't afford to lose anymore people, otherwise we'll lose our quorum and we have to be back in July. So please, people, don't leave.
Okay. The next meeting of the SLA committee is June 21st. Please go through the list, see if there's anything that's near you, important to you, let us know. The presenters, the presenters earlier, if you want to get back to them, let me know about those large venues. And on next Tuesday, the 14th, we're going to have a Public Safety and Social Service Committee meeting to try and get ourselves back on track with that. So, all right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Tom. Everybody know we got to go to the B rule, be brief, be bright, and be gone. Otherwise, we won't be able to vote on these issues. Capital Budget, Gina Barrows. We are on the B rule, everybody.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to summarize my report. The Capital Budget Committee met on Tuesday, May 17th, 6:30 via WebEx. Quorum was achieved. The agenda was first to review the Office of Management and Budget's preliminary response to the Brooklyn Community Board One District Needs Statement for fiscal year 2023. And second, to discuss the next steps in preparation for submitting our district needs statement for fiscal year 2024, which will be due on October 29th. I wrote, I summarized the, at the committee, I summarized where we are now in the annual cycle budget process milestones that is written in the report. I will highlight that what's important is, everything's important, but I will highlight that we have 40 capital budget request items, 26 expense budget request items that are to be answered for submission, and these items have to be prioritized. Also, that the City Planning Community Board Liaison Team is available to guide and work with the Community Board at committees. And therefore, if Community Board committees need help, I can work with them and we can work with the Liaison Team. Discussion. The Budget Committee members reviewed the OMB's responses to the district needs statement. Important in the discussion was, I will highlight. Okay. Okay, Ms. Barrows recommended that committee move those district need requests funded from prioritize to continue community support. We had four district items that did receive approval for funding. And that was good news. However, the committee members discussed on how to advocate for those district needs that were not funded. And we've continued, if we continue to agree that it's essential. Ms. Peterson and Mr. Brooks recommended that we alert the elected officials that these are our priorities, such as writing letters from the Community Board or requesting meetings with members of the City Council. Ms. Barrows related that the Budget Committee could ask for guidance from the Liaison of the City Planning. And also, Ms. Barrows related that the Budget Committee will work with the Ad Hoc Outreach Committee in partnership to discuss strategies to communicate with public members, nonprofit agencies, and civic leaders, and to look at how we can work on the creating, targeting public forums. Also, committees agreed that affordable housing is the district need top priority. And an idea proposed by Ms. Del Teague, Chair of the Yule Committee, is to make conditions on the developers and owners of the developments, especially the larger ones, where we say, if they want our approval, we ask that they contribute to the infrastructure or give toward the maintenance of those budget request items that are on our district needs statement. We can then ask the city and city agencies, such as Parks Department, to support us in demanding that the developers contribute to it. Ms. Peterson emphasized the importance that the Housing Committee could also do something in this area. District needs request items can be further discussed and strengthened by the Community Board Housing Committee and can have developers periodically give the Community Board a report on how well they are doing and putting in the percentage, both moderate income and lower income housing that they have promised. Okay. On that, the committee met with, okay, Ms. Barrows informed that she did meet with the Transportation Committee, and the Transportation Committee has 18 priority request items. They started reviewing the OMN's responses and will ask, and they will provide their recommendations to the Budget Committee, and we will be also working in partnership. Ms. Barrows will reach out to other Community Board committees to do the same. And after the Budget Committee, I did send a memorandum to the Housing Committee and Parks Committee so that we can also review and revise those district needs statements pertaining to both the Parks and Budget Committee. And then Ms. Peterson highlighted the importance of other community issues, such as educational services, police services, health, and hospital services. Ms. Barrows agreed and highlighted that those concerns are also discussed at the Safety Committee. And I see that we will be having a Safety Committee meeting on June 14th. Okay. Ms. Barrows also related concerns are critical about the high volume of garbage in the community. All right, so, oh, Ms. Barrows related, we reviewed, the Budget Committee reviewed the Environmental Committee report on their recommendations of the critical environmental issues to incorporate into our district needs statement report. Okay, finally, we have here, Mr. Gross requested funding for night cameras for night scene housing. And I want to make a correction. I wanted to remove what I wrote here about Ms. Fuller asked that PS250A be added to the educational district needs since it was left out by mistake. That was my mistake. I want to correct it and make a correction to my report. Ms. Fuller asked that for item number 14, educational district needs, the school's name is John V. Linsey. The A had been left out of the word Linsey by mistake. Overall, the Budget Committee acknowledged that these committee discerns, there was a lot of passion in terms of many community concerns that we have, and this is something that we will work on throughout the year using this district statement. And we will continue to advocate for these prioritized needs. And we can track them as I created a specific working document that we will work with. And we will meet again in September. However, I am available to work with the committees during the gathering of information that will occur throughout July and August. Thank you very much. That's my report.
Thank you, Gina. Parks and waterfront, Phil?
Yeah, Alis, put me at the end because I don't need a vote. So let the committee's votes go before me.
Okay, thank you. Transportation?
I thank you.
Eric, Transportation?
Thank you, Chair Fuller. And thank you for your votes for the attendance committee, everybody. I appreciate it. Okay, so everybody loves the Monitor Street Bike Lane. Apparently, but we're going to get, I have two votes that we need. One, it's basically housekeeping. The first is Brooklyn, New Brooklyn Car Service Incorporated, their base renewal license, B01259. It was but approved unanimously without abstention or objection from the committee. We need a vote.
I'll make a motion, Phil Capone Negro?
I'll second the motion. Gina Argento?
Phil and Gina, Jerry?
Yeah, what's the motion?
To approve the base renewal license for New Brooklyn Car Service.
Gina Argento?
Yes.
Bogdan Bukarowski? Lisa Bamanthi?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Brzadis?
Yes.
Tom Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera? Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Phil Capone Negro?
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella? Teresa Censiata? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Daly? Giovanni D'Amato? Aaron Drinkwater? Arthur Dibidowski?
Yes.
Lloyd Feng?
Yes, thank you.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Yes.
Crystal Garcia?
Yes.
Joel Goldstein?
Yes.
Joel Gross? David Heimlich?
Yes.
Sabrina Help? Katie Denny Horowitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias?
Yes.
Moisha Indig? Robert Jeffrey? Ozana Kaminsky?
Yes.
Corey Canton?
Yes.
Paul Kelteborn?
Yes.
William Claggsbold?
Yes.
Yo Landau? Marie Lianza?
Yes.
Yo Low? Trina McKeva? Adam Myers? Sante Michelli? Toby Moskowitz? Rabbi Niederman? Karen Neves? Mary O'Domack? Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Bella Sable? Isaac Soffer? Del Teague?
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes, yes.
Maria Viera?
Yes.
Simon Weiser? Twenty-seven, yes. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the second item on our agenda was the Kingsland Monitor Bike Lanes. We had asked DOT to come back following our, the board's approval of the north side of Greenpoint Avenue.
Eric, I can't hear you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, sorry, the we asked DOT to come back to discuss the bike lanes. Part of their presentation focused on the final edits to the north side that the, that the board voted on to approve for north of Greenpoint Avenue on Kingsland Avenue. We did get into a discussion about alternatives for Monitor Street specifically. specifically for the, for the southbound connection to Meeker Avenue. The conversation went on for quite a while and you can, and you heard the hour and fifteen minute result of that tonight. So, you know, basically, when DOT presented the final, the final plan to us, they included the Kingsland and Monitor Bike Lanes, which we, as a committee, were not really prepared for. We were just expecting to vote on the, for the north side, which is why we separated the vote at the last full board meeting. I think it's, this is my opinion. I think it's clear that more needs to be done from DOT to study some kind of alternative. I, I love the, the Kingsland Avenue two-way, at least from Greenpoint Avenue to Norman, on that wide sidewalk, if that's even possible. But I think, you know, we, we might need some kind of more, more rigorous study of that before, you know, we can, now, they don't need our approval on it, it's a safety project. But I think the, it's pretty clear that the community that's directly impacted by that, by that stretch was heard tonight and we might want to take action, action on that, but we did not vote on it in the committee. I don't know if any members that were on the committee want to add anything to that.
William Vega, I just think we were all surprised that DOT Outreach failed to connect with all the manufacturers and businesses in that neighborhood. And that was surprising. A project of this nature, you have to talk to everybody, thank you.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, that, that was discussed, yes.
Arthur Divanowski, I mean, I live right by there and I pass the street. Can't imagine having a bike lane on that block. To be honest, it's all commercial, all trucks. I think it's a terrible idea.
Eric, I have a question, Steve Chesler?
Sure, Steve.
So as it stands right now, DOT is moving forward and they're going to install those lanes because they're not, is that correct?
Well, we did ask Preston Johnson, who was responsible for, he was the project manager on this, he's not necessarily part of bikes, but he was project manager. He did say he could go back and review alternative routes, but it would be unlikely for them to go forward. Now, it's not clear what their timeline is for those installations and they do, DOT did say that they would, while they did not do notice on the front end to say, you know, we're considering monitor that, that there would be notice to the businesses prior to installation. And as far as I understand that, those notices have not gone out yet. They still have a lot of work to do on the, on the, on the, on the north side of Greenpoint Avenue on Kingsland. And it's unclear as to when, when they're gonna get to that.
Because, well, what it sounds like is they just essentially gonna put in the green lanes without any protection.
Yeah.
Essentially, the trucks will continue to park where they park and they'll be blocking the lanes and it'll just be, I don't know, probably a worse situation.
It's, it's, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's, yeah, that was it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I am on Monitor at least three times a week, that, that particular stretch. And the one speaker that mentioned that, you know, they work in the film industry and they're constantly, you know, crossing Monitor between trucks, they have headsets in. You know, it's, it's their responsibility to look both ways, of course, you know, but, but it is, it's not your typical street and it isn't within the IBZ, it is, I don't know, it just doesn't make sense for me, Monitor.
Can we make a motion, Eric, can we make a motion?
Make a motion, Gina.
Yes, I would like to make a motion strenuously opposing the installation of conventional bike lanes on Monitor Street and Kingsland Avenue.
Arthur, second.
Wait, let her finish.
I know what she's gonna say because I live right there, so I know.
Thank you, thank you.
Finish your motion, Gina.
Yes, on Monitor Street and Kingsland Avenue, south of Greenpoint Avenue. And compelling DOT to examine the availability of safer alternatives such as two-way protected bike lanes on the east side of Kingsland Avenue. I think we should make this, this is the motion.
Second the motion, Gina.
Thank you, Arthur.
Motion in second?
Yeah, repeat the motion, Eric.
You want me to repeat it? I will repeat it.
I'm sorry, Gina.
That's okay, Chair. I'd like to make a motion strenuously opposing the installation of conventional bike lanes on Monitor Street and Kingsland Avenue, south of Greenpoint Avenue. And compelling DOT to examine the availability of safer alternatives such as a two-way protected bike lane on the east side of Kingsland Avenue.
I'll second the motion, Arthur.
Okay, Gina and Arthur, roll call vote please.
Gina Argento?
Yes.
Bogdan Bakarowski? Lisa Bamanth? Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Brizadis?
Yes.
Thomas Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Phil Caponegro?
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella? Teresa Cinciaro? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Dally? Giovanni Damato?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater? Arthur Divanowski?
Yes.
Lloyd Feng?
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Yes.
Crystal Garcia?
Yes.
Joel Goldstein?
Yes.
Joel Gross? David Heimlich?
Yes.
Sabrina Help? Katie Denny Horwitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias?
Yes.
Moisha Indig? Robert Jeffrey? Ozenna Kaminski?
Yes.
Corey Canton?
Yes.
Paul Kelteborn?
Yes.
William Claggsbold?
Yes.
Yoel Landau? Marie Lianza?
Yes.
Yoel Lo? Trina McKeva? Adam Myers? Sante Michelli?
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz? Rabbi Niederman? Karen Neves? Mary O'Dommerick? Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Bella Sable? Isaac Soffer? Del Teague?
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Vieta?
Yes.
Simon Weiser? Twenty-nine in favor, motion carries.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, so, the, the other item, I want to thank William Vega for organizing his neighbors to come out and talk about the intersection of Jackson Street and Graham Avenue. Those of you that know that intersection, I think you will agree with me that especially if you're on Jackson trying to cross Graham, whether you're a pedestrian, cyclist or motorist, it's very treacherous. There have been a number of, of crashes at that intersection. There's two bus stops there, it's in a commercial zone. It's the only intersection between Metropolitan Avenue and Meeker that does not have a stop control. And so, you know, the neighbors came out and they talked about hearing crashes, fender benders, about the dangers of like walking their kids to one thirty-two. All kinds of, all kinds of comments came through. We had a huge turnout from the public that lived directly by that intersection. There have been study requests, signal requests that have come through. Some have been denied. It appears that we are still within the thirty-six month window to have a new study done. But I will be working with Rhonda Messer to see what the condition of the, what the status of the last study is. But then also, you know, it was discussed that the community should reach out to Councilwoman.
Why can't you, David?
Watch you to wait.
Hello?
And, and.
Thanks, Jen. That, the, the, the neighbors reach out to Councilwoman Gutierrez for some faster actions. And what that led to was the old, the old saw of we really need local control for for approval of stop controls that don't go by the federal warrants. The federal warrants do not adequately recognize the kind of foot and road use within the city. And that is what DOT defers to. So Ryan Cornyn, who was still on the board at that time, made a motion. The motion was Brooklyn Community Board won to draft a letter to New York City Council members Lincoln Ressler, Jennifer Gutierrez, as well as Borough President Antonio Reynoso, to amend the city charter to include pertinent local data in addition to or in exchange of federal DOT traffic warrants to improve street safety for all users. That motion was seconded by William Vega, it was approved unanimously without objection or abstention. I need a motion to approve that letter?
I, I second the motion, Eric.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
Steve Chesler makes the motion.
Thank you, Steve.
Can I second it? Now, can I second it?
You're, you're good, Gina, you're second.
I just want to add, this is William Vega, we had another close call which we, basically that corner, delivery trucks blindside everybody. So we have a cyclist in the car that just barely misses each other by inch or two. And it wasn't their fault, it was the delivery truck that just parked there and you can't see anything. It's an excuse of, but that we don't have any stop signs, I mean, lights there, thank you.
Okay, a motion made by Vega, seconded by Argento, that everybody letter to the council.
The motion was by Chesler, Madam Chair.
Oh, Chesler, I'm sorry, Chesler. Okay, Chesler and Gina. Roll call vote please.
Gina Argento?
Yes.
Bogdan Bakarowski? Lisa Bamanth?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Brizadis?
Yes.
Thomas Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Phil Caponegro?
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella? Teresa Cinciaro? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Dally?
Yes.
Giovanni Damato?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater? Arthur Divanowski? Lloyd Feng?
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Yes.
Crystal Garcia? Joel Goldstein?
Yes.
Was that Crystal I heard?
Bogdan is here, I'm sorry, Jerry, I'm sorry, Bogdan is here.
Joel Gross? David Heimlich? Sabrina Help? Katie Denny Horwitz?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias?
Yes.
Moisha Indig? Robert Jeffrey? Ozina Kaminski?
Sorry, David is here, Heimlich is here, I'm sorry. Yes.
Yes, Jerry.
You vote yes?
Yeah.
Mr. Heimlich votes yes?
And Ozina votes yes.
Ozina votes yes, thank you. Corey Canton?
Yes.
Paul Kelteborn?
Yes.
William Claggsbold? Yoel Landau? Marie Lianza?
Yes.
Yoel Lo? Trina McKeva? Adam Myers? Sante Michelli?
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz? Rabbi Niederman? Karen Neves? Mary O'Dommerick?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Bella Sable?
Yes.
Isaac Soffer? Del Teague?
Yes.
William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Vieta?
Yes.
Simon Weiser? Twenty-eight, yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. So, as you heard from Gina, we're working on a district needs statement. I really appreciate the work that Gina's doing on this. Paul Kelteborn, who is now on the board, welcome Paul, has been working up a Google Doc on, on some, some items. And Ms. Brightner, Ronald Brightner, who's a public member of the committee, and a bunch of us are gonna get together over the summer and try to hash out a district needs statement, work with Gina over the, over the summer on that. And then, Old Business, some of you might have noticed, seen this back in, back in April. One of the items that we had voted on, the Jewel Norman Stop Control failed to be implemented by DOT because of federal warrants, so thank you again for your vote. And then there was a discussion about notice of how board members are notified about public members voicing support or objection to particular items that come before the committee. It was, it, it seems that that DO-IT has to adjust their span filter, so we'll, we'll be communicating over the summer, I guess, about how to, you know, make that fixed and Jerry, maybe it's fixed already, I don't know, because like I have about forty emails so far on Monitor Street and I apologize, usually I do, I apologize to the public and to the board. Usually I include all those in my report for the public record, but they are on the record because they've come into the board, but there were just too many to include in the report. So what I'll be doing going forward, because the committee, there's a lot coming up for transportation. So what I'll be doing is I'll just be giving counts of emails I received by the time of the next Transportation Committee and I'll just report out what the topic is for against and the, and the numbers, just so that, that's, it's recorded. But in no way were emails being hidden or held back or anything like that. It is a technical problem. And any suggestion otherwise is not appropriate and I just want to make that clear. But in light of this, Mary O'Dommerick and I had a discussion offline about, about the, about the volume and all the emails coming in. I know some other people reached out to me. We, I, I hope that my, my count solution, reporting out the, the count of emails received in Old Business of the committee will satisfy that need, but you know, if we're gonna get a thousand emails from a survey monkey or or change.org petition or something like that, we, we really need to figure out a, a better way to account for those somehow. I don't know if that's a larger discussion with the board about public notice, because I know ULOF gets a lot of emails, SLA gets a lot of emails. I'm sure other committees get emails as well, but we'll have to, we'll have to look at that as a, as an internal thing going forward. So, thank you, everybody, for your patience. And that completes my report. Our meeting is, our next meeting is on June thirtieth. And the agenda will be going out probably in a week or two. Okay, thank you, everybody, good night.
Hey, thank you, Eric, Phil Parks and Waterfront?
That, Ms. Chair, Ms. Fuller, can I ask something, the Chair, regarding transportation? This is Kaminski. Eric, I, I have a question to you. How do I approach your committee? Do I have to prepare something regarding Greenpoint Avenue? regarding Greenpoint Avenue intersection and McGinnis Boulevard? There is no light turn on that intersection. And because of the, all the construction going on on both sides and the gas station being boarded up, it's becoming very dangerous. And there is a lot of people walking to K-Foot for the food shopping. This is the largest supermarket in, in that area. So should, should I prepare something, you know, for the next meeting of the Transportation Committee with, you know, request for you to look into that, that item?
Sure, that's, that's a very chaotic situation right now. I'm over there three times a week as well. And I actually avoid that, that intersection altogether.
We all do.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we have a fairly, as of right now, we have a fairly full and I don't know. Lively agenda, lively agenda planned for the 30th. But I can't guarantee that I can fit it. Yeah, I can't guarantee I could fit it in on the 30th, but you're always welcome to bring it in, bring it in on new business. And then we can have a larger discussion because that construction is going to be, there's a couple of projects going up there, plus the gas station. So we could take it up maybe, I want to dedicate the July meeting to district needs if, if possible, if there's nothing pressing. So maybe August or something like that. But you and I can, can speak offline and, and maybe talk about some things.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sure.
Phil?
Thank you, Dealice. We had our meeting on May 26th. I don't have a vote, so I'll just go through the items we talked about. Mary Salak gave a nice detailed update on all the projects, capital projects in our community. One of the things that was mentioned, the McCarron Park House, which we worked very hard on, should be opening up any day now. They're taking away the trailers and the, the, the construction equipment. So that was, that, that's one of the items that we talked about. One of the second item was, Elise Kirby wanted to talk about the RFP at Marsha P. Johnson, which is Smorgasburg. She'd like to see more community input, which I think we all would like to see. And she talked about maybe getting a community-based nonprofit to run it. So maybe we could keep some of those profits in the community. So that's a discussion we're going to keep having with state parks. And the last item we had was, we had a nice discussion with the, with the, with the dog owners in, in our community. We know there's been a big increase in the dog population. And it's the old story. There's more dogs, more people, and not enough parkland, not enough open space for everybody. So we talked about, we got to work together. We got to come up with some creative ideas. And we'll, we'll, again, we'll move forward with this in the future. And just the one last thing of a nice item, you all know our parks manager, Vinnie, he had a baby boy. So I just thought that would be nice to mention it. If you, you see him, just wish him and his family well. Thank you, Dealice.
Yeah, Phil, Phil, you're, you have your ongoing topic of the Met Pool. I know Bella is here, that they now have five hours. Can you keep on your agenda monitoring how the women are getting back their, their eight to 10 hours that they've been fighting for, for all these years? So you keep it on top?
Okay, no prob, no problem.
So they got one more hour, but Bella, I think there's, there's our negotiations going on with the local council people, but you should be a part of that, Phil. So we probably left you out and shouldn't have.
No, and I'm glad that you mentioned it, Jen. And when I talk to our, our council people, I'll, I'll bring that item up, okay?
Just keep it there because that's the object. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is that all right, Bella? Yeah.
Thank you, Phil. Give, give Vinnie our congratulations and best wishes.
Thank you, Jen.
And we are going to have a baby too.
All right, thank you.
We are going to our judge. Our young judge.
The judge had a baby. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. I'll tell her.
Thank you. Go ahead, Steve. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we, Environmental Protection Committee met on June 2nd. We achieved a quorum. We didn't, we have no voting items, but we had some significant agenda items. The main one being National Grid came in and presented and talked about their clean energy vision, fossil-free future for heating homes and businesses. You know, they had a full team in, the main personnel who we interacted with was their Vice President of Corporate Affairs, Brian Grimaldi, and the Regular, Regular Story Strategy Director for Future of Heat, Don Chazbepour. And, you know, the, just summarizing what they're doing is their way to comply with the state Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which is, you know, to be fossil fuel three by 2050 is, you know, getting, supposedly moving away from natural gas to using, it's called renewable gas, which is generated like from, from like fossil, from factory farms, from, you know, waste, municipal waste, organics, organics waste, and specifically the Newtown Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant is a project that's lasted almost 10 years. They're supposed to be basically repurposing the gas that is created from the processing of solid waste and organics there. And then through what's called green hydrogen, which is through electrolysis, creating hydrogen gas that would be, you know, which is chipped through mostly existing pipes into businesses and, and homes for heating and for, for, I guess, for, for cooking as well. And they're basically, there's a five, in five-year increments, they'll get to 2050 and implementing it. And it's going to be a combination of, you know, it's green hydrogen, renewable gas and and, and then relying on electrification for, for, for heating as well. And a hybrid approach to some of them. And the, you know, we, there was a large, you know, a significant turnout from the community dominated by people involved with the No North Brooklyn Pipeline Coalition and St. Energy. And, you know, and, and our, you know, committee were very active in asking questions and making comments. And one of the key things is that the, a lot of, the, the green hydrogen right now seems mainly theoretical at this point. They're going to start a pilot program in Long Island with 800 homes that were damaged on Hurricane Sandy. And they're just going to start with a 5% blend into natural gas and then work their way up to larger concentrations of it. But they're still working with academia and institutions and government to actually come up with something solid to implement the green hydrogen. And the, the, you know, one of the key issues that brought up at the renewable natural gas is, is the reliance on these massive factory farms. And attendees were emphasizing that they're, they create their own environmental problems, including, you know, contributing to, you know, to climate change, just because, you know, livestock at the large scale, just through emissions from their bodily functions work toward, you know, create CO2. But, you know, damaging wastewater. And, and so they're just really questioned relying on that along with landfills and, and other, other sources. And then also, the, specifically with the treatment plant, this has been a project, it's in a six, it's been delayed for six and a half years. And they, National Grid really didn't offer a really viable explanation why it's taking so long. They blamed the Superfund site and a relocation of where they're, where this conversion is supposed to happen. And Willis Elkins, our former board member, who's, you know, Chair of the Newtown Creek CAG and ED of Newtown Creek Alliance, just basically said it was really BS, that there, it was just, so, but National Grid did claim that by the summer that that will be operational. So we'll, we'll, you know, we'll hold our breath on that and we'll, we'll see what happens. And then with the green hydrogen, folks really questioned how safe and reliable it is because with traditional, you know, with natural gas, it leaks. It leaks through the mains, through the street and within homes and businesses, both, you know, contributing to climate change and creating a toxic environment. And green, green hydro, hydrogen will actually corrode and damage traditional gas pipes. So people push back hard on that. And so National Grid, their plan is to replace 6,000 miles of old pipe and 400,000 service lines in homes. Just a staggering, you know, project in, in scope. And, and so what people push hard on is what would the cost be? Something like that. And National Grid's, we don't have those figures. We'll get them to you. People press them. I couldn't just produce them right there. And they claimed they would get it to us before tonight's meeting. And they didn't, didn't come through in that. But someone from St. Energy, Lee Zishi, who's one of the organizers for, for that group, for over four years, it'll cost over a billion dollars to replace all of that conduit. So it's a staggering amount of money that inevitably would be passed on to the ratepayers. So that, that was very, that was questionable. So, so at the end of the day, I don't know, it just, I unfortunately had just a feeling of greenwashing. I mean, there, there, I think there was, you know, a certain amount of substance to what they're going to do. But, you know, they, what also was brought up is that there's, there's, you know, an all electrification act with the state that is, that was being advocated for but was not passed. But supposedly they're promoting electrification to work with their, with their goals, but they seem to be advocating against this new act. So there was a contradiction going on there because, you know, they, they're, they're, they're bread and butter in terms of their generating revenue and profit is from natural gas. So, so there, that's, so, so at the end of the day, we just need to really keep an eye on, on this. And especially with Newtown Creek, with the treatment plant project. I know there's just a lot, a lot of question marks and issues with that. But I, I really appreciate everyone who participated. It was really, you know, held them to task, National Grid. And then we also talked in our second item was about the district needs statement that we, we, you know, thank you, Gina, for just laying out what the, what the timeline is. So we plan to work over the summer and create a working document to make some suggestions in requesting capital funding for the district. A lot was related to climate change and businesses in IPZ not being up to code, you know, how they comply, air monitoring. You know, just out, in terms of outreach about issues in meetings, better education, more extensive translation and, and communication. And there's also, yeah, code compliance came up again, getting the Borough President and the Mayor to allocate more funds for enforcement. There's only four inspectors in the entire city. Especially for waste transfer stations, sanitation inspections. And Willis Elkins brought up developing green infrastructure around the creek, which would help storm water management, CSOs, greenhouse gas emissions, urban heat island effect. But a warning CB1 is not a high priority with the city in terms of designating a district to implement these measures, which is a little bit shocking considering how much we're surrounded by water. And also was brought up by William Vega, we need Department of Health inspectors as well for indoors, there's only four entire city for the quality of air. And then just moving on to number three, related to the New Heart, you know, project that is partially a Superfund site and partially a Brownfield site. Deborah Scott had written to the board on behalf of tenants who live on Bell Slip. They had real concerns with how the, you know, there are two, you know, toxic plumes, you know, great scale underneath the New Heart. How would it affect drinking water, both in their building and Greenmont Playground across the street? So we tried and we invited DEC and the developers to come in, to meet with her and meet with us to talk about it. They were not able to attend. So we, we just had, we, Jane O'Connell's in charge of our region, related to Superfunds, wrote a note to saying the, you know, that the contamination is in the groundwater and drinking water comes from a completely different source. And so there, there's no worry there. And the, and then as far as the remediation of the Brownfield section, the eastern portion, that work, that action plan is going to be released very soon. So it should be community meetings about it. There were suggestions from North Brooklyn Neighbors, made the community board. Together, North Brooklyn Neighbors could partner and supporting the community on that. But and also connected Deborah Scott, who's the ED of North Brooklyn Neighbors, to help support her efforts. There are other issues related to parks, which came up during the parks meeting related to dogs, which Phil alluded to. And the state of Greenpoint Playground, which is not a good state. And then lastly, just old business again with the Newtown Creek Monitor Committee, committee, AKA Nick Mick. We, we had questioned DEP and urged them to reestablish the committee, provide financial support for that. But they responded back to the board with a letter saying that in with the, you know, plant, with the treatment plant coming online, coming operational, there's no need for the committee anymore. But Laura and Willis said there, there's ongoing issues with the plant. And so, you know, so they took issue with that. So I think the, the plan is, is to invite DEP to a future meeting to question them and have them respond to the various issues that are still ongoing with, with the treatment plant. So that is it in a very condensed nutshell of our meeting. And and that's it. Thank you. If anybody has questions, happy to field them.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, I, I just, I just want to say you're doing an amazing job on the Environmental Committee as Chair and that meeting was so good. With the, with the experts you brought out and everything else, just to keep National Grid on their toes and I just really want to commend you.
Thanks a lot, Eric. The same, I, I just want to, the, the level of expertise and tenacity of the community was just, I was kind of blown away. So hats off to everyone for looking out for one another.
Thank you, Steve.
I just want to say.
It's after 10 o'clock, guys. We're on, we're on the B rule. Be brief, be bright and be gone. Parks, Parks Minute? Okay, Mary has written announcements, elected officials, we don't have any, Lincoln spoke, old business? Is there any old business, new business?
Chair, this is William Vega. I noticed on the letter.
William, you're muted.
I apologize. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, make it brief.
Yes. So I'm looking at the letter that Borough's Office sent to Jerry about the newly appointed members. There's two people there, Crystal Garcia and William Claggsbold. They have their term expiring in '23. Are they there for one year? I told all of us for two-year terms, so that may be a typo there.
We have no control over that. I don't know, I don't know if they cert, I don't know.
Probably filling a vacancy.
Could be.
Okay. It just, it just was different. Thank you.
I think they're finishing the terms of people who left.
Ah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, you have to take that up at a, at a higher level than us. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a blessed summer. Be safe, stay healthy and I look forward to.